Thought I'd be able to give you heads up. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and talk to this puppy.
David should have been here, but his mom might have got worse. He's in bad shape.
If we could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please. If I could please ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, and then we'll ask Councilmember Marvin Thompson to lead us into place to play.
Shall we play? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher-Calmway?
Here.
Mrs. Sinker-Erley?
Here.
Mr. Shawalter?
Here.
Mrs. Englestein?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Thank you. We have a forum. Spoke with Mr. Lesby earlier this afternoon. He is expected to be at the meeting, but he's dealing with some very difficult health issues with his mother. So if he's a few minutes late, or if Mr. Lesby has to leave early from our meeting, it'll be because they're at a very critical juncture with his mother's health. We do expect David to be here in just a little bit, though. Two things, if I could just ask for the audience's indulgence. First is, you've probably already met Tim Thompson, our Fire Marshal. And Tim has been necessarily on the job this evening. We knew that this conversation would interest a lot of citizens. And we recognize that our council chambers is fairly limited in size. I've already had one member of the audience suggest that a subsequent meeting, we may seek a larger venue. Part of our difficulty with that is we think it's very important that our meetings be broadcast. For those who can't take off this evening and can't crowd into a room, for folks who may be wishing to watch at home, or we also make YouTube videos out of these, and we post these on the city's website. So the broadcast is very important to us in that a lot more citizens can see that they can back into this room. We know we have occupancy concerns with the room. I think Mr. Thompson will simply want to keep the doorway open so that people could get in and out if there was a need to quickly. And he's very content with folks to stand back here and folks to stand along the wall, just as long as the doorway has kept open. It very well may be that some of the folks who have signed up to address the council tonight may have not made it into the room yet. But our intention is to hear from everyone who wants to speak tonight. This is the public's meeting. So if someone happens to be in the audience out in the hallway, Mr. Thompson will go get them when it's their turn to speak. And then we'll just keep the room at its capacity throughout the evening. So I appreciate your all's cooperation with Fire Marshal Thompson. The other thing that I thought is very important to note, the folks at home will be noticing this, but we have been working on initiative for over a year now to work with Elkhorn Crossing School and the Media Arts Village at Elkhorn Crossing to allow their students to broadcast our meetings for us. Council renegotiated a cable franchise two years ago and insisted on new cameras in this room and new broadcast console. So we've been working for about a year with the principal and the teacher who heads up the Media Arts Village at Elkhorn Crossing. And I'm very proud to let everyone know tonight that tonight, for the first time, we have a broadcast booth full of students actually doing this building block of democracy. So to the students, we thank you. And I hope that this experiment works very well for both the public to get better broadcast and for our students to get a real-world experience in how this stuff works. Let's see, a couple of procedural things that I want to work our way through, and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting this evening. First, each of the council members should have received a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting of March 13th. If you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Motion, Mayor, for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in, if there are no corrections, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Also, in your council packet, you should have received a copy of our latest check register. If every council member could indicate if you received that check register. Thank you. At this point in our meeting is normally when we begin public comments. However, we do anticipate that public comments will take a while this evening. And there is a fairly routine block of business that Georgetown Municipal and Water Sewer Service needs to do before the council. It makes sense to us to let these couple of minutes of fairly routine business be done, and then we can excuse those people from the meeting and perhaps even make more seating. Bob Willhite?
He's out in the hall. He's not sitting.
He's here.
Bob Willhite?
Yes. He was in Tracy's office.
Yeah, he's coming.
He's coming.
He won't pass. He was in the media room.
Okay.
Bob, I'd explain to the audience that your business items are normally pretty straightforward and brief. Rather than have you wait till the end of a couple of hours of public comment, we thought we would give you the courtesy of moving in and moving out.
I appreciate that very much, Mayor, City Council. Have four items to ask your approval on tonight, and these are all approved by our board on March 21st. The first is approval of a purchase order to CI Thornburg for the low bid amount of $15,360.65 for replacement plug valves and check valves for pump station number nine. This will be expended from the collection system upgrade and replacement line item in our budget.
Motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions for Bob on this purchase order, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Approval of a purchase order to Bell Engineering in the amount of $11,500 for professional services, for engineering and design services for the Burgess Heights Sewer Line Extension Project. And our budget includes the line item in the amount of $20,000 for this project.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Thank you. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Approval of a purchase order to Clifford Tree Services in the low bid amount of $11,500 for tree removal on our lot at the corner of Hillside Drive and US 460. This will be expended from our 1,000 West Main Project line item.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Approval of a purchase order to Harret Company in the amount of $11,875 to pool, repair, and install two gearboxes at Waste Water Hoop and Plant Number One. This company has previous experience with these gearboxes, has the crane that's needed to do this job, and they have proved themselves to be able to perform this work in a timely manner. This will be extended from the Waste Water Hoop and Plant Number One plant equipment upgrade and replacement line item.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you all.
Be sure and give your seat in the hallway to somebody else.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
There's a real big echo coming from about every other word. Can you hear it?
Cause of the doors opening.
The two or three words are about a two, three-second delay.
It's the door. You can't help that this time.
It's just the way it is.
We asked that the TV be turned on in the hallway so the overflow crowd could hear. The difficulty is that TV is on about a 10-second delay. So it's just enough to drive you crazy.
Well, okay. I'm almost there.
So, you know, our choices are a little limited. I hate to turn off the volume for the benefit of people who are in the hallway. Good. As we move through the public comment process of the meeting, I think that's the part that we're the most interested in hearing people's thoughts and people's feelings. And as I said earlier, it is the council's full intention to listen until every person's been heard. And we will take the time to do that. Given that there are so many people who have expressed an interest in speaking, I think we may have seven pages on the sign-in sheet. We know that there'll be a large chunk of time invested in all these people speaking. So I would simply ask, at times in the past, we've used an egg timer, which seems pretty rude when that egg timer goes off while you're talking. We try not to be that strict with our time. We would simply ask the audience, I think, in the interest of courtesy, if we could keep our comments to the three to four-minute range, just given the sheer number, if that's possible. If that doesn't give you adequate time, when we cycle through everybody, we're willing to give you another cut at it. Your council intends to hear you tonight. So I would simply ask that those be kept at least as brief as they can so that all of your neighbors can be heard as a part of the process.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I will be leaving.
Okay.
Probably in about an hour.
Well, and I'd explain to the audience you're a reason for being tardy, and we expect that you will have to leave at some point. Yeah, yeah. Tim, it would be helpful for the audience in here if our friends in the hallway could keep their murmuring down. We want them to be engaged, but we need their courtesy.
My son's gonna get whipped right now.
The majority of our audience tonight is here for one very specific reason. That is to make public comment on a fairness ordinance that the city council has been asked to consider. I have to emphasize on the very front end of our meeting that there is not an ordinance under consideration by the council tonight. There isn't. The council has not instructed a draft to be written. So there is no specific ordinance to be considered tonight, and there will be no vote tonight. But we have pledged a process whereby we could learn the component elements of a fairness ordinance, what the law says on this topic, and also what other cities have done in terms of passing a fairness ordinance. We've also asked Mr. Hartley to do a very brief synopsis of the law in this regard. He distilled down a great deal of information into a two-page synopsis that makes no value judgments. It makes no determinations, but it does lay out carefully what the law is that surrounds the construction of a fairness ordinance. So after public comment, we're gonna ask Mr. Hartley to review that two-page document. We would invite all of the audience to stay for that presentation. Once your comments are through, there is still value to your attendance and your participation in the meeting because there will be more information to come. And we always, when we have a large audience here, like to invite everyone to stay for the civics lesson that is a city council meeting. Sometimes we make sausage, but this is our process. Given that most of you are here to talk about the fairness ordinance, there are a couple of folks who wish to speak on other topics that are of interest to the council, and they had contacted us in advance to do that. So I would like to bring those people forward to get their brief comments out of the way so that then the issue that is important to you can be addressed without interruption. So with that said, could I ask Mr. Rodney Chambers?
So, hi, Mr. Chambers. How you doing?
To talk about a run-walk for the Amen House.
Yes, sir. My name's Rodney Chambers. I'm a member of St. Paul Lodge 11, Freedom Accepted Friends Hall Masons. We were wanting to put on a 3K run-walk for the Amen House. So whatever we take in, we're gonna give them 50% of the proceeds. We're not asking them to put up any money as far as the insurance. We're gonna take care of the one-day VIN insurance. I've been in contact with Farm Bureau about the insurance for that, so we've got a price on that. And I'm in conversation now with Officer Allgood about setting up the route. So I'm just here tonight to see if we can have permission to do so.
Yes, sir. And delighted to know that you're working with Officer Allgood since we've changed some of our 3K and 5K routes to make it more convenient for citizens. But they've got all that information, and they can walk you through that. So the request is for this 3K run-walk for the benefit of the Amen House, which is June 24th, 2017.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
I'll second.
Second? Thank you. Any questions for these gentlemen? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck with your event.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Tom Combs, who has a request for the Fourth of July
Yes.
For the Quonos Club.
Yes, sir. Mayor Prather and fellow council members, I'm Tom Combs with the Scott County Quonos Club. And I have submitted an event application for the purpose of allowing our club to, again, conduct the July 4th parade for Scott County and Georgetown to be held on July 4th. But the plan includes closing Main Street from approximately 9:30 to about 1 o'clock, and then converting College Street into a one-way to allow for the participants to assemble their floats or presentations.
Good. I'll tell you what, we've really appreciated your club's willingness to take on the Fourth of July events and want to facilitate that. Tom, are you all in touch with the college?
Yes.
To make sure about Memorial Drive?
Yes.
They're very sensitive about Memorial Drive.
Yes, they are.
Good. As long as you're working with them.
Hopefully, they will be participating again this year.
Good.
Motion.
Motion, thank you. Second? Any questions for Mr. Combs? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would you like to stick around for the...
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Okay. And the one other item that folks had asked to speak to is Mr. Danny Woolums with Bluegrass Green Source. Bluegrass Green Source, for many of you in the audience, is one of our partners that we utilize for environmental education and stormwater educational purposes.
Thank you so much, members of the council and Mayor Prather. To kick us off, I'm gonna have Ms. Elise Marion. She's a Girl Scout here in Georgetown who's helping out on the project. She's been a tremendous amount of help, and she's got a few opening remarks.
Hello. I'd like to talk a bit about the project and overview of what it is. It's a community art contest to promote stormwater, awareness about stormwater pollution. There will be 22 entries will be installed as storm murals on the streets of Georgetown along South Broadway. And I would like to encourage you, if you're interested in this project, to please help support it. There are trifles by the door. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Good job.
Should we give her a quick little round of applause? It takes a lot of courage. So we at Bluegrass Green Source are once again thrilled to be working with the city of Georgetown on another great, exciting program. As you all, city council members, may have seen the trifold at your seats with more information about the project, I want to go in and invite all of you to our showing of the entrance on Earth Day, April 21st, at the Scott County Public Library. We will have entrants from all over Scott County, people wanting to show off their love of water recreation here in the city. I remember growing up here, canoeing along bywater farms, catching bluegill down at, you know, Royal Spring Park, and hiking out there when there used to be a hiking trail by Great Crossing Park. So with great love for the city that I grew up in, I come back and hope to bring a really invigorating art project to the city of Georgetown in the 22 Storm Drains located along Broadway between up by Indian Acre Shopping Plaza and down by Garth. So we are looking for sponsorships. If anybody, you know, is interested in sponsoring this project, please feel free to contact us. There should be more information in the trifold as well. But please feel free to talk to your friends and talk to your family members about supporting the project, either by entrance, by donations, or anything else that you can think of, by promoting the event. City council, we're thankful for you all supporting the project and for you all taking the time to listen to us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and Judy, you had signed up for public comments to talk about the stormwater concerns at Derby Estates. We did have Kyle Goodwin, the city engineer, draft a...
And Kyle's letter, our correspondence with Kyle.
Okay. Have you gotten a copy of his latest memorandum that he just completed Friday?
No.
Okay. It gave the council, council had asked for a history of the issue and the times that we've talked about it or gotten bid estimates and things of that nature. So Kyle compiled that history. Some of the council, this issue has been around longer than some of these council members have been around. So we asked that that document be prepared. When we sent that to the council late Friday afternoon, we indicated with that email that we didn't expect the council to receive it on a Friday and be ready to discuss it on a Monday. That's not enough turnaround. We asked the council to digest that memorandum and be prepared to talk about it at our April the 10th meeting, which will be the next meeting, Judy. Happy to hear anything that's on your mind, but we'll go into a much deeper conversation with the benefit of Kyle's memorandum at our next council meeting.
I just had a little brief statement, and I'd like to read it.
Yes, ma'am. Please do.
Because I know there's an issue about when this actually happened. In 1998, my husband and I purchased the lot at number 105 that is known as 130 Donarrell Drive in Derby Estates. We built our home there and moved on January, I'm sorry, July 1st, 1999, to our new home. We selected the lot because of the large trees that were in the back. In November, we put up a picket fence on the left side of the lot, but we did not fence the back since it was a farm fence. We added koi pond, rock flower gardens, arbor, walkway, bird feeders, bird bath, and a hammock to the yard. Our grandsons referred to the area as the forest. My husband called it the woods, but to me, it was the park. Many, many hours with sweat and hard work went into the park. We left our backyard, and then two years ago, the bypass came into being. We had attended all the meetings and were happy that green space would be there. They called it a berm. What we were not prepared for was the large culvert, and you'll see it on your pictures, the large culvert that would be located feet away from our fence facing directly into our yard. The first good spring rain, and our yard was flooded, and it took down a section of our fence. Our neighbors to the left also was flooded, and it continued down Donarrell, running between the houses on Donarrell and Tim Tam Trail, which you all have seen the pictures. At that time, we notified the state and city. Ryan Quarles came out and stood on the street and said it really wasn't a problem. But of course, he didn't get to really see it. I contacted councilwoman Karen Tingle, and she came out, and she actually waited in the mud and saw the damage that we had. I also contacted Chuck Tackett, and he came out and went through my yard and saw the damage. But you all know Chuck wasn't re-elected, so we fell through the cracks there. On October of last year, around eight households met with city engineer and heard of our continued problems with the water coming from the bypass. Attached will find my correspondence with Kyle along with the pictures of my yard and the damage. At your last meeting, several council people brought it up, and I felt like we were just kind of washed over and not really dismissed, and that's the reason I felt like I need to come and personally talk to you tonight. I felt I need to speak and to have it on record that this is only getting worse. I have lost four to six inches of topsoil out of my yard, and I have got roots that I cannot even go out in my yard for the roots they're showing, so we don't trip. We now refer to that as our mud pit. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
And Mr. Weinberger is one of my neighbors. He also has...
I'm at 136 Donarrell. In 1999, when we moved in our home, I noticed there was a drainage problem, a flood problem. I spoke to the engineer at that time, who's no longer employed here, and I indicated to him before the house or the neighborhood was taken over by the city that you need to do a thorough inspection of this property, that you have severe problems. He never came out. This has been going on for a long time, and it's not an issue that has to do with zoning or any issue that you all dealt with before. This is water that's coming off of a field that's farmland. It's coming under and coming into city property, but it's also going into a watershed. And you can't have that for the amount of water that's flowing in there. You have fertilizer runoff, you got animal fecal runoff. And I don't know why anything hasn't been done before now. Each year, we come here and we talk about it. But for the amount of money that you could spend for it, you've already had people come out and survey for this. It just sits. The people one block away, because they had erosion to the point that it was gonna come into their yard, got some work done last year, and we were hoping that they would come down and work with ours also because it's worse than theirs. But they were taken care of, and we assumed everybody else was gonna come to the other end of the street. Nobody came. They had three months of good work time with no rain, and yet nobody came. And then when the floods come in the fall, I get nine inches of water, moving at 20 miles an hour, in my backyard. And you have children playing in those culverts. Come out and look at it sometime because at the end of the street, when it comes to the watershed, it's three feet high. I kid you not. The culverts have to be that large in order to deal with the water. And when it doesn't, it backflows into the people's yards right next to it. If you all want to have that in your house, I'll be glad to let you come over and look at it. But nobody in here would want that in their backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, can I ask Judy a quick question?
Certainly.
Judy?
Do you have any questions?
I do. What year did you say you moved into your home?
We built and moved in in 1999 in July.
Same year?
Yes.
Okay.
We bought our lot in 1998 in October.
Okay.
And then we started building in November.
In some of the discussions, though, we've heard that once the bypass was completed, the situation got much worse.
Much worse. We didn't have any problem, really.
Okay. But he kind of said, didn't he indicate that in '99, he did have some issues, that he's talked to the engineer and thought that they should do something? But you didn't really experience your problem till after the bypass was completed.
Well, one of the problems, well, there was always been a drainage area.
Right.
That's true. But it has never been to the extent that is since they had the culvert. And if you look at the first picture that I gave you all, you can see my lot is, I've got circled. You can see that from, let's say, up my street, five houses is where it creased. So all that water is coming down on both sides of the berm, that they call it. And there's a culvert on the other side. And then there's a culvert on the other side of the road.
The other side of the bypass?
Uh-huh, the bypass. That's also, yeah, you can see it. I circled it, too.
Yeah, who owns that property?
So that's Price Smith's farm.
Okay.
Now, there's always been a wet weather spring. But nothing like what is being converted to this culvert, which now points directly. And as you can see on the next picture beside that one, that's the culvert. And I'm standing in my backyard
Okay.
...when I take that picture.
Right.
And then, you can see it flows down, it flows down again in the bottom picture. I'm standing in my yard, you can see the farm fence, and I'm standing inside my yard, and this, and we're getting the trash...
Yeah.
...the bottles, the cans, all of that.
So, Judy, I know Karen trucked through the mud, and I think all of us have been out there at one time or another, maybe not to meet specifically with you, but to see the other work that was done and kind of see the runoff when it does occur. And I keep going back to the, to the fact that maybe if we went on the other side of the bypass, Mr. Smith's property, would there be any way to slow down that flow from that side? And I don't know that we've gotten a favorable answer on that.
The question's been asked. We have not gotten a favorable answer.
I don't think that's the significant amount, because we have always had water from that farm...
Right.
...that flowed down.
But, you never had it contained like you've gotten...
But, now, it's all gathered and flow through that one culvert...
That's huge.
...that's on, up the street, that, it's huge, yeah. And the water, when you, you know, I've got pictures of the water, but you should see it flow. I mean, we've got, you know, you could, you could do rapids through it at times. And now, it has deteriorated so much that with all the hay that they put on the feet, on that berm, and with the grass and everything else, that now, it's spread out, and it's a much larger thing than that little...
Yeah.
...area. And now, I've got standing water. If you all came by this weekend, you would have been able to play in my puddles in my backyard. And my concern is if we don't get this addressed, I'm going to lose some trees. That's one thing that's very serious. And then, the other thing is the mosquitoes. And last, we haven't used our backyard in the last two years, because there's mosquito problem. Because when you have standing water, you've got mosquitoes, and there is nothing, there is nothing that we can do to change this. Not a thing. We can add topsoil, it'll get washed away again. There's nothing, nothing that we can personally do. It's all up to you all.
So, Judy, the back of your house, does the back of your house face west or south or...
It faces west, uh-huh.
West. So, you think most of the water's coming from kind of the northwest?
Uh, I think it's coming from north and south, because it comes down to a point down there.
Right, right. But, the water coming from Mr. Smith's property, you don't think that's the worst part of it?
No. No, that's gravel that you see there. What I see coming out is more what's coming down the hill and coming down from the other houses, the runoff in general, coming across there.
I guess we can ask Kyle this question, and I know we've asked him about going to Mr. Smith's farm, and, you know, is there anything that can be done in that area to slow it down? But, sometimes in Florida, for example, when you're driving down I-75, you see these little concrete berms, so to speak, and then you got a small little tube to let the water kind, and it's almost like they're kind of like capturing the water slowly, and I just, I wonder if maybe something like that along the bypass in that area could be constructed. I know Kyle's done a lot of work on this, Mayor, but I'm just, you know, at this point willing to throw out anything to be considered.
That solution is not on Judy's land, it's not on the city's land, it's on someone else's land.
Right, right. No, I know.
Yeah.
And we have an engineering estimate. We have not had a $350,000 allocation provided...
Yeah.
...to do the fix that Judy's asking for. We know what the fixes are. Engineering's been done, and if you'll review Kyle's memo that we, we still would like to undertake in two weeks when he's here and can discuss it without such an other audience waiting. But, it's a simple fact, we haven't allocated $350,000.
Yeah.
We can do that at any time council chooses to do it.
I know. I guess I'm still looking for, I don't want to say the simple fix, but maybe a practical fix, if there is such a thing as one, and maybe there's not in this case. You know, the Bradshaw Farm, to some degree, was what we thought at the time was a kind of a simple, simple, relatively simple fix, and the county went along with this, and we all, you know, kind of made those improvements, and it absolutely helped Broadway. I mean, it didn't solve the complete problem, but it certainly helped. And I guess I'm wondering if maybe there's that type of a resolve to this issue, perhaps not.
What we have done in the budget that was just passed, the amended budget that was just passed, we included the study of two of our sub-basins, which is the broader kind of planning that goes into large-scale storm, stormwater considerations. In the upcoming budget that we're still crafting, Kyle wants to take on another eight of those sub-basins, so that we can do the, we can do the kind of big planning that can answer the questions you're asking.
Yeah.
Right now, we can look at a small fix and either allocate funds for it or not. We don't have a very broad perspective, but we have started allocating the money to get those answers.
Yeah.
Would also, Judy, if you could get ahold of Tracy or some, for an email address, be glad to send you that memorandum, so you can add it to your file, and your documentation should be up to speed with the councils.
Because Kyle, yeah, Kyle does have it too also.
I'll be glad to email it.
You've got, if you'll look right on the back here...
It's on here.
It's on here, because Kyle had sent me some information, and I in turn sent some back to Kyle, so that back page is, is on there. So, if you, that would be fine, and we will be glad to come back...
Thank you.
...in April. I just wanted, wanted you to know it's, I wish I could say it was better, but it's not.
Mayor, is there, is there any chance at all, I know we've been, several of us have been discussing this matter for at least five or six years now. Is there any chance, whether it be the next meeting, one of the, one of our two next meetings that are coming up here in the month of April? If we can discuss this in more detail and know exactly what we're looking at, what the options are, so we can know what we're looking at here, is that possible?
And you all are welcome to come to my yard. I do not mind at all. Karen's been there, and, you know, Chuck has been there, and you all are welcome if you'd like to come and see what I'm dealing with and see if, by looking at it, if you can see something that you think would work.
Mark, to answer your question, we've talked about this issue, even in the two years that I've been here, this has been talked about repeatedly. We have documentation that goes back to at least 14 estimates that we've collected. I think the intention of scheduling this for discussion on April the 10th and going ahead and sending Kyle's memo to you now was so that you would have all of that information on the first meeting in April to go through.
Okay.
And if you're, if you're ready at that point, if, if council wants to dedicate funding to that fix, it can be done.
I did talk to Philip Pratt also...
Yes, ma'am.
...and he asked me to contact him next week after the, this week when he gets through with the state, and so, he is going to come out and look also.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
And Judy has mud shoes if you need it, because I took a brand-new pair of white tennis shoes and went to her house. That was a mistake.
Yes. I promise I'll let you, I'll let you go and walk through, but I'll provide you some extra shoes to wear, or bring you a pair of extra shoes, because you don't want to get back in your vehicle after you walk through my backyard.
Yes, ma'am. Well, since we're going to discuss this in April, and there's information that's to be shared, if, if, we might move on to the topic that so many people are here for, but...
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Pardon? Yeah, no. My intention is to simply, I was having Tracy make sure that I understood the order in which these sign-in sheets were done. It's our intention to simply start calling the names as they were signed up, and I think we understand the order that that was done in, so we will proceed that, proceed with that process. The first is Mr. John Hinkle.
Thank you, Mayor Prather and city councilors, for letting me speak tonight. My name is John Hinkle. I'm a professor at the college. I live in Lexington, but I work and pay taxes in Georgetown, and this is the community where I spend most of my time and my energy. I wanted to speak to you to thank you for considering a fairness ordinance for Georgetown and for promoting a civil dialogue about this issue. I hope we can continue in the same way. I believe that there are some here tonight to oppose the ordinance on religious grounds, and I don't want to begrudge anyone their freedom of religious practice or belief. I believe, but I believe with Pastor Fox, that LGBT nondiscrimination is a civil issue, not a religious one. I've read the ordinances passed by other cities, and they have broad protections for churches and religious freedom, in line with the First Amendment. On the other hand, there are real people whose lives would be improved by this ordinance. We heard last week about Brittany Martin, who suffered housing discrimination last year, and we believe there are more who have suffered discrimination and silence because they have no legal recourse. Georgetown Fairness has heard stories and submitted them to you of people who hide their LGBT identity for fear of harassment or worse. One of them, Josh Sloan, even suffered sexual assault, which he concealed out of fear that by reporting it, he would expose himself to even worse. People like Brittany and Josh are the reason I think that Georgetown needs a fairness I also want to assure you that Georgetown Fairness is a homegrown movement of people who live here and/or work here. I'm the closest thing to an outsider, and I spend 48-plus hours a week here. A few of us started the present effort last year in response to the terrible murders of the Pulse nightclub in Orlando. One of those victims, DJ Burt, grew up here, and there was a vigil for him on the square right outside this building. I've been impressed ever since then by the broad support we've gotten for fairness in Georgetown. Last October, we had, we held an LGBT community pride picnic, which almost 300 people attended. Since then, we've gathered support from all manner of people, clergy, small business owners, and lots of religious people, including most of us who've worked on this effort. We've even had support from religious people who oppose homosexuality on moral grounds, but feel strongly about fair treatment in employment, housing, and public accommodations. I know you'll hear voices in favor and opposition, and I know that you'll listen to them carefully, but I also hope that you'll remember the folks whose voices we can't hear tonight, people like Brittany Martin, Josh Sloan, and DJ Burt, as well as all the folks who are afraid to speak up for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the sign-in sheet is Chris Cool.
Honorable Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Christopher Cool. I've been a resident of Georgetown for 18 and a half years. I'd like to offer my thoughts on the proposed changes to the Georgetown Civil Rights Ordinance. I come from a hard-working Kentucky family. I'm a heterosexual man, a husband and a father of four. I'm a decorated combat veteran. I'm a dedicated Christian and a former worship pastor. I have experience in college bookstore management. I helped build an internet company before the dot-com bubble burst in the early 2000s. I've been the front man of a moderately successful rock band. I'm also a laboratory research scientist in the field of molecular biology. My point in listing these different aspects of my life is that each one of these things brings a different set of lenses through which to view the world and view my fellow human. In each of these paradigms, some of the greatest and best people I have known and loved have been gay men and women. The first bisexual person I met was a member of my extended family. One of the most professional soldiers with whom I served was a young gay man from Mississippi. This was during the presidency of the elder George Bush, so he had to keep his secret or lose his career. The first manager to give me a chance in the college bookstore industry was a gay man whom I hold in the highest regard. He even traveled to Kentucky to attend my wedding. Two people I worked with at the internet company were a gay woman and a bisexual woman who worked just as hard and well as anyone else. One also cannot work very long making music without encountering a wide mix of people, including gay people. As for the laboratory, one of the most brilliant and driven scientists I've ever met is a gay woman whose wife is a robotics engineer. This scientist established and runs a nonprofit organization to expand STEM educational opportunities for minorities and underprivileged children throughout central Kentucky and beyond. My point here is simply that members of the LGBTQ community are just like you. They work, live, love their families, give selflessly to others, just like people who are not members of this community. The advancement of LGBTQ rights is a long overdue matter of civil rights. The race-based civil rights movement of the 1950s and 60s was the struggle of an oppressed minority, whose only innate offense in the eyes of the establishment was, "They're different from us." Decades later, most people have come to their senses and realized that the color of one's skin has nothing to do with being an inherently good or bad person. The codification of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 was a vital step in providing protections from those who oppress based on only on perceived difference of race, religion, sex, and national origin. This is exactly the same dynamic the LGBTQ community faces today in many places. According to the way our ordinance is currently written, "I don't like you" can legally be enough reason for one person to significantly worsen the situation of another. By adding protective language for them in the Georgetown Civil Rights Ordinance, we can incorporate the lessons learned in the civil rights movement and prove that our city is welcoming, fair, and seeks to protect the oppressed. I mentioned earlier that I'm a dedicated Christian and a former worship minister. It's no secret that many people object to what they call the LGBTQ lifestyle based on reasons of morality and religion. These people certainly have the right to believe that being LGBTQ is morally or religiously wrong. Our First Amendment rights even mean that they're free to say so, but this is not a license to discriminate, nor is it a license to oppress, to deny fair treatment in housing, financial transactions, or employment. I would submit that regardless of one's conclusions about the moral acceptability of the LGBTQ existence, no reading of the words of Jesus comports with discrimination and unfair treatment based on one's judgment of another person. He was actually 100% clear that he intended for his followers quite the opposite approach. In any event, there are wide differences of opinion within Christianity itself on LGBTQ issues and acceptability. Reverend Fox stated it succinctly a few weeks ago before this body, when he said, "There is no monolithic Christian position on this, and anyone who says there is is in an echo chamber of their own devising." All the particulars of the Christian community's differences on this subject are completely beside the point, however. I only bring them up because they are the source of many people's objection to protecting LGBTQ people. In truth, however, this is a civil governmental body with the obligation to impartiality towards religious matters. Thomas Jefferson stated this eloquently to the Danbury Baptist Association in 1802 in what has since been known as the Wall of Separation Letter. I admonish, implore, and eagerly encourage this body to codify the protection of our LGBTQ community into the Georgetown Civil Rights Ordinance. Thank you for allowing me to address you.
Thank you. Next on the sign-in sheet, looks like Kevin Hall. Kevin, you had a time notation when you signed in.
Yeah, I wanted to be, I've covered the council for long enough to know you want to be at the beginning rather than the end. My name is Kevin Hall, and as I just said, I spent six years covering this council for the Georgetown newspaper. I haven't stepped foot inside these council chambers since leaving 10 years ago. That's how important tonight's meeting is to me. I'm here because about a month ago, I got engaged. My fiance and I are fortunate, because she and I never have to worry about anyone else's opinion on fairness being applied to us. Opponents will try to call this a moral issue, but honestly, what could be more, what could be more moral than doing what's right and being fair to all? Besides, this will be my second marriage. So, will opponents soon be allowed to discriminate against me for that? Yes, that sounds ridiculous, I realize, but so does discriminating against someone based on their sexual identity. So, I ask you to follow this simple guideline. If you want to be Christian about it, do unto others. I trust that you know the rest.
Next on the sign-in sheet, is that right? Gentry Hambrick.
Mr. Mayor and city council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Gentry Hambrick, and I live and work in Georgetown, and I support the passing of a fairness ordinance. I don't plan on any of those three things ever changing. I'm also a Christian and a child of God, made in His and/or Her image. I'm also a lesbian, living with and eventually planning to marry my girlfriend, Miaiko Smith, who is here tonight with me. I hope we can continue to live and grow in a town that supports the fairness of all people. We want to have a family eventually, and we want to wake up knowing that that's okay. That our kids and each other will be safe and accepted. We have the exact same dreams and comforts you do. I want to be sure and point out... I want to be sure and point out that this is, again, not a religious issue. This is a passing of a fairness ordinance, and it will have no threat to any sort of First Amendment or religious freedom rights. We do not have to agree on whether the souls of those who are born gay, like me, like so many others, are going to heaven or hell, if they're sinning. Instead, we are called by Jesus, all of us, to promote the fair treatment of all people, the least of these. So, as a gay Christian, I believe I do understand both sides of this issue. This is more simply a fairness and human rights plea. It is certainly more difficult for me, or my girlfriend, or Kelly Klaver, or my brother, who happens to also be gay and gave me the courage to come out, which was not until I was twenty-four, and I'm almost twenty-nine, to get up here and speak. I've always been courageous. I have a theme song. I get knocked down, but I get up again. You're never going to keep me down. I gave a speech in fifth grade for winning a dare essay, and I didn't want to speak because I was nervous, as I am kind of tonight, about a very important issue. And I prayed, as I did tonight, that God would give me smiles and courage, and that's what I've brought here with me. For this reason, despite the fears that I do have, I won't be silent. But yeah, that would be easier. So I beg of you to please not consider, or to please not only consider voting for this fairness ordinance's passing, but to consider voting for the future of Georgetown and the protection of all of its people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, or next on the sign-in sheet is Claire White.
Hi, my name is Claire White. I live here in Georgetown and have for many, many years now. I am here to say that I support fairness. I'm twenty-six, so I was class of 2008 at Scott County and class of 2012 at Georgetown College. And I...there were about ten kids that were out at high...in my high school when I was there, and I found out as soon as they graduated, you know, they moved, they left. They all left, and then they came out over the next...some of them right away, some of them over the next few years. They had to leave the city, some of them had to leave the state. Josh Sloan left the country before he felt comfortable coming out. I went to school with him for eight years. This, to me, is unacceptable. Some of them are never going to come back because they didn't think they could...I didn't find out that some of my friends were suicidal until years later. I might have been able to help them, maybe. And that's just that, as someone who has been suicidal myself, that's not acceptable. I just really want my friends and family, family also, to be able to go about their lives without fear of discrimination and feel safe. That's...that's the gay lifestyle, I think, is people just want to go about their lives. So, thank you for hearing me.
Let's see, Homer White.
Thank you, Mayor Prather, and members of the City Council for giving us citizens a chance for comments. My name is Homer White. I've lived in Scott County with my family since 1996 and in Georgetown since 2003. I'd like to register my support for this endeavor to update our civil rights legislation and to extend its protections to matters like sexual orientation and gender identity. And I'd plan to say some things to back that up, but some folks who've gone before me have backed it up pretty well. I'm at the bottom of page one on seven pages of comments, I understand. So I want time for the council to be able to discuss some of the technical matters of where we stand legally, implementation, things like that. And frankly, I'd also just like to hear from my fellow citizens, especially those who are opposed, and see what they have to say. So I'm going to shut up now.
Thank you, Dr. White.
Good evening, everybody. Just by way of introduction, I'm a twelve-year combat veteran of the Marine Corps, and I've seen firsthand what happens when people have to hide their lifestyle for fear of losing their job. Kids are scared. Do you speak out about who you are as a child? Do you speak out about who your parents are? Can your parents come to your school events together as a gay couple? No, because they'll lose their career. They'll lose the home that you're living in just because of who they love. And that's not fair to children, and it's not fair to families, and it's not fair to people who, just simply as was said, want to live their lives. We're not seeking here to impose beliefs on anyone else's religious ideology or on anyone else's lifestyle. All we're asking for here tonight is a civil rights ordinance that will continue on what we put our hands over our hearts and pledge to the flag and what several of us here signed up to fight for with our very own blood: liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. At the bottom of page two, just, I'll keep you all up to date, period. I'll hit the bottom of page two.
My name is Willow Hambrick. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm a teacher at Royal Spring Middle School, mother of five, grandmother of six, and a Christian standing in the need of grace. All five of my children are made in the image of God, but only three of my children wake up every morning and feel fully free and accepted for who God gifted them to be. This makes me deeply sad but fiercely hopeful that this city council will make my children and all LGBTQ people feel like they are fully at home in this place we all cherish. For after all, as Harper Lee observed in To Kill a Mockingbird, I think there's just one kind of folks, folks. And as Paul wrote in his letter to the Galatians, "There is neither Jew nor Gentile, neither slave nor free; nor is there male and female, for you are all one in Christ Jesus." My son Rhodes and my daughter Gentry wake up to a Georgetown where they have no sure protection from being denied housing, jobs, or discrimination simply because they are who they intrinsically are. That is not fair, it is not right, and it is not acceptable. And you, members of the city council, have the singular privilege to set my children and fully ten percent of the population of Georgetown free from this ever-present cloud of persecution and discrimination. The genesis for this current fairness movement is not from outside agitators or big-city liberals. Rather, this fairness movement is born of people who drink the waters of the Royal Spring. It is born of the people of Georgetown College, Main Street shops, of the Scott County Library, of people who eat Frank's Donuts and swim at the Pavilion, attend Scott County schools, and eat ice cream at Fava's. Yes, this fairness ordinance and movement is born of well over a thousand people who signed the fairness petition and hundreds of people, close to three hundred people, who attended the First Pride Festival last October. This fairness movement is supported by thousands of people attending local churches, right here in town, who call themselves Catholics and Episcopalians, Methodists, Presbyterians, and, yes, Baptists. It is born of people who have a heart for those who are marginalized and for those who still live in closets, those who still cower beneath their very skin, all of whom are fearfully and wonderfully made by our Lord. Many who oppose the fairness ordinance wonder why it is needed, wonder no more. Exhibit A for why the ordinance is needed is on display in this very room and outside in these halls. There are many people who oppose fairness, people who are fearless that the passage of a fairness ordinance will have negative impact. There are no statistics or truth to support those claims. But there are perhaps hundreds of testimonies in Georgetown over the years of people who have been bullied, denied jobs and housing, and who have even taken their own lives because the burden of fighting for fairness and acceptance became too heavy. And while you on the council are not in the business of deciding what is or is not sin, you have been charged with the responsibility of ensuring that all citizens of Georgetown feel safe, affirmed, and free under justice of law. Not very many people have the opportunity in this life to actually set people free. As city council members, your vote for the fairness ordinance has the power to set the captives of discrimination free, the power to bless and not to curse. As the mother of two gay children, I so wish that I had the power of the vote that has been entrusted to you. My favorite biblical character is Queen Esther. Her uncle Mordecai went to her to tell her she must go before the king and plead for the lives of her people. Fearing that approaching the king without permission might result in her death, nevertheless, she persisted in her entreaty for the king to protect her people. And the words of her uncle Mordecai served as the catalyst of her courage. He told her, "Esther, perhaps it was for a time like this that you were made queen." Likewise, I implore all of you good people, perhaps it was for a time like this that you were elected to the city council. Be like Esther. If not you, who? If not now, when? How long, oh Lord, how long, until the day when all God's children will not be judged by the way that they love, but by the content of their character? Scripture tells us to do justice, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with our God. Yes, justice for all, mercy for the persecuted, and the humility to let others be who God has made them be without judgment. And when thinking about fairness for all people, Christians believe that the ground is level at the foot of the cross. May it be so this day. May it be so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have thirty-two signatures, more to come, of ministers, clergy, vestry people, priests who have signed and supported this ordinance, and I have copies of my words here, so you can please, sir...
Thank you.
...allow people to have them.
Certainly will. Thank you.
Thank you for this chance to speak with you today. My name is Nancy Sowers. I've only lived in Georgetown for eighteen years, which I know to many people who have lived here for generations is a kind of a short time. I did marry a man who's come from Sadieville in Georgetown for generations. I feel like I've married my way in. I want to speak in favor of this fairness ordinance today. I think most of the arguments have been made for why we need this ordinance. At this point, I want to ask you all to please send that signal that's needed for everyone to feel welcome in our wonderful city. I love living here, but it's easy for me to love living here. It's not as easy for other people. Please make it so it's easy for them, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patricia Fannin. I'm a resident of Georgetown. Kind of feel like how Daniel felt in the lion's den tonight. There's not been one person that stood up to oppose this yet. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor and councilmen and ladies. I'm here to speak tonight against the proposed fairness ordinance. I'd like to say first that I mean no harm to the LGBTQ community. I believe that each one of us has dignity and deserve respect. In fact, I have a lot of acquaintances in the community. I've actually worked side-by-side in the federal government for twenty-seven years in Washington, DC, with no one ever having to have an ordinance to be treated fairly. But if this ordinance is passed, it sends the wrong message to Georgetown. I'm a grandmother, and I'm concerned about my grandchildren and the society that they're growing up in. I teach them to love and respect others. I teach them tolerance, and I teach them to be fair. I also teach them that there is a God who gives us moral boundaries in life. As I see it, this proposed ordinance moves the moral boundaries of our community. It's also intolerant toward those who disagree with the LGBT community. This ordinance is unfair. As it was shared earlier, it could be used against people of faith who disagree with same-sex marriage. We believe the American people spoke loudly in the elections this last November that they're wary of some of these issues being promulgated throughout our communities. We do believe this country was founded on Christian principles. If you don't believe me, go look at the monuments in Washington, DC, and look at the Bible verses there. Our fear is that this ordinance will have a reverse discrimination effect for Christian-owned businesses and organizations who have been and will be targeted by these groups with the ordinance in their hands. Where will the rights of the Christian-based businesses and organizations be? How is it tolerant to punish business owners with religious convictions that say that they should not participate and support gay weddings? For instance, the cake baker and the flour maker, who were targeted because of their Christian belief that they did not want their name and their business associated with something they strongly disagree with. That's what this ordinance would do. I care deeply about Georgetown. Otherwise, I would not have left a six-figure salary in DC to come here and live. I love this town. I care deeply, and I desire that it remain a community that respects moral boundaries and religious freedom. This ordinance would undermine that, and it undermines what I'm trying to teach my grandchildren about true fairness. Thank you for your time. Oh, one other comment: God created a man and a woman, not a man to man, to create more humans.
Thank you, Ms. Fannin. Next on the sign-in sheet. Wayne Robey.
Well, my remarks will be very brief. I just want to say, my name is Wayne Robey. I live in Stampin' Ground, and I've lived there since 1951, so...and I'd just like to say that I do not think Georgetown needs a fairness ordinance. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ron Fannin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Ron Fannin. I am a resident of Georgetown. I live at 103 Burke Dale Drive in Georgetown, Kentucky. I am strongly opposed, strongly opposed to the ordinance under consideration, and I am a Christian, and I am free. The current proposed ordinance is not needed. Georgetown is a law-abiding community that adheres to the Civil Rights Act of 1964. The Civil Rights Act is a landmark United States labor law that outlaws discrimination against race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. We do not need additional regulations or ordinances, and I feel that this ordinance defies the basic moral standards upon which this nation was founded. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Fannin. Jody Lambert. Tim, would you ask the audience...the audience in here is remaining quiet and respectful. I would expect the same from the hall... I would expect the same from the hallway.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity of being here today. My name is Jody Lambert. I'm a gay woman. I'm a retired federal employee. I'm a taxpayer. I have been a homeowner in Georgetown and Scott County for thirty-four years. And I'm also an openly gay ordained elder in the Presbyterian church. The fact is that gay men and women are your teachers, are your doctors, are your plumbers, are your librarians, even the people that you sit next to at church. Some you may know are gay, some you may not have any idea. I know when I go to the bank to invest money, some of the vice presidents there, they know that I'm gay. I go to businesses here in town, some know that I'm gay. I pay city taxes, I pay county taxes, I pay school taxes, and I don't have any children. But all of these entities are more than happy to accept my money. I know when I was born, that God made me just the way I am. God loves me just the way I am. And God makes no apologies for creating all the gay people worldwide. I've lived in Scott County and Georgetown for thirty-four years. I wasn't born here, but I feel like it's my home. I feel like it's a welcoming place. I love Georgetown. But after thirty-four years, please don't tell me that Georgetown is a town of discrimination and bigotry. I'm asking our town to stand up and say that we believe in fairness for all people. It's the right thing to do. It's the just thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Next on the sign-in sheet is Rose Perkins?
My name is Rose Perkins, and I've been in Georgetown since ninety-three. I thank you all for the opportunity to talk. Not all the politicians will give you that opportunity. So I'm really surprised that we're even having this discussion in this day and age. I was surprised to hear people talking basically what sounds like for or against gay people. Well, I'm for all people, but I want to make a very different point, and it's economic. If you look at what has happened in Mississippi and what has happened in North Carolina when people oppose gay rights, it goes way bad. I was just reading on the Internet about all the different ways that people who spend money will punish communities that are not with the times. And when all this thing came up about the bathroom bill in Mississippi and North Carolina, they started canceling conferences, the hotels were losing money, the... There was a... Somebody was going to make a movie in one of those towns. They said, "Nope, not in this town. They're not fair to people. We want nothing to do with it." Don't make Georgetown one of those little podunk places that are not with the times. You know, things have changed. There was a time where it was acceptable to tell a black person they can't eat at the counter, to tell them they can't be in a hotel. You know, that's not who we are. That's not who we want to be. And if you can't have compassion in your heart for the fairness of all people, try to look at it from the economic standpoint, because we do not want to be that town.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Next on the list is Mr. Kyle Fannin. And that would be the bottom of page three for anyone keeping track.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for giving us your time. I guess it's appropriate that the son follows mom and dad. That's the way it ought to be in life, right? My name is Kyle Fannin. I'm a resident here in Georgetown. I'm a pastor of a Baptist church here in Georgetown. I oppose this proposed ordinance change. I believe the SOGI ordinances, as I've come to call them, to be unfair and denies equal protection under the Constitution to those who have faith and practice certain religions. Christians, Mormons, Jehovah's Witness, and Muslims all believe that homosexuality is wrong, no matter what an individual progressive church might present. By passing this ordinance, you will be mandating to more than seventy-five percent of the citizens of this city who claim strong religious views that they must accept the government's definition over God's description of what is right and wrong. By adopting this ordinance, you would be removing any choice from those who practice their faith. Your mandate would create a scenario of compliance or a government mandate to close their business. Make no mistake, today every citizen of this city has the freedom to choose how they conduct their business. We've just heard from a host of individuals from the community called LGBTQ who have said they have lived freely, operated freely, had dinners, meals, played together, and survived wonderfully well in our community without this ordinance. Yet we're told we need to pass this ordinance to be fair. Passing this law would take away that freedom. I would remind the council that under the present laws, the Georgetown Fairness Members said on February twenty-seventh, "There is no real threat or abuse presently, but we want this ordinance so that we might be proactive." Against whom, I ask? Against what are they going to be proactive? The question really before the council, then, are these: Are Christians free to act on what they believe? Or is it merely the LGBTQ community who is free to act on what they believe? Should Christians merely fall in line as a second-class citizen? As do those told by the government? Is being a member of the LGBT community equivalent to race? The First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States states that we should be free to practice our faith. The question you must answer is, are you prepared to overrule the wisdom of the framers of the Constitution? Dozens of cities, municipalities, and counties across America have begun to pass SOGI ordinances, written exactly like the one you are proposing. And in twenty-plus instances, there have been lawsuits filed against Christian business owners within six months of its passage. This is a systematic and protracted campaign against the rights provided to citizens in the First Amendment and against people of faith in America. Stop and think. In their own presentation, Georgetown Fairness could not substantiate one claim of rights infringement. There are sad stories, and that I agree to. I understand there is tragedy and a tragic sense of feeling on this, but there are no substantiated claims. There have been no rights infringed upon. So where did the wording for this SOGI ordinance come from? The answer can be found simply on the Human Rights Campaign Foundation website. The HRC agenda is to criminalize disagreement with their beliefs on sexual orientation. They have a municipality index of two thousand and sixteen on their own website, hrc.org, and supply materials on how to change local ordinances. The part perhaps most disturbing is that HRC even seeks out communities who have no present grievances and conjure up grievances within a community so that they can carry out their agenda. Sound familiar? To believe that the proposed ordinance was written word for word by this organization who makes the claim that they want faith and religion out of the public square is quite unsettling. It's the reason, as citizens, we engage in elections. National, state, and local leaders must be aware that bullies wielding ordinances ought not be able to swoop in, convince a few city council members that there is a tragic problem, and get a standardized ordinance passed so that they can check another city off their municipality index. This ordinance is not about being fair. It's about crafting a tool to punish and to proactively attack Christians and others who practice their faith. Faith is not reserved to pastors and chaplains, and the free exercise of religion doesn't mean that people may only be faithful within the walls of their churches. Today, within the city of Georgetown, there exists an amalgam of different worldviews. This makes our town great. This makes Georgetown exactly what the framers of the Constitution envisioned more than two hundred years ago. If I want to buy a handmade wooden sign with a Bible verse written on it, or one that promotes my faith, I can find a person that offers to sell me that sign. If I want to find somebody that wants to make me a sign that reads something in line with the LGBTQ community, I can find that person and have them make my sign. The sign maker can even make his choice and choose to make a sign both for the Christian who practices conservative Christian values and for the LGBTQ community member. He has that choice today. But by passing this ordinance, you're taking that choice away from them. Before you say my example is merely a hypothetical imagined fear-mongering tactic, you should know that hands-on originals in Lexington has been treated with unfair and reckless disregard because of their ordinance on fairness. I know the owner personally. I coached his son in sports years ago. The owner of this company is a kind, compassionate, and caring family. The T-shirt company was asked to supply T-shirts with a message that was offensive to his faith for a Lexington gay pride parade sponsored by G S L O. The owner declined this business for faith-based reasons, but located another T-shirt maker who would create the shirts for the parade. This owner was then sued for discrimination because of this very ordinance you're debating as a council. You know, Fayette County, about ten miles south of where we're meeting, isn't too far from home, is it? The business employs folks from the LGBT community, but because the leaders of the LGBT community were offended by the owner's refusal to do the work based upon his Christian values, they sued him. The business lost major contracts with large vendors, not because they did anything wrong, but because the customers could not afford the PR risk to do work with him anymore. His staff was mandated at his expense to go through sensitivity training. This isn't fair. Far from it. Yet this man and his company have suffered greatly at the hands of this very fairness ordinance. I'm glad that you are our elected officials. Every Wednesday night at our church, we pray for our local elected officials. We're glad for you, we're thankful for each of you, and we're thankful for the diversity amongst our leaders and our community. Having said that, we are deeply concerned over the promotion of an ordinance by the mayor and the city council that would put Christian business owners and landowners unfairly in the crosshairs for a lawsuit. Finally, is the LGBT equivalent to race? As a pastor, I could readily show you a biblical answer. Rather, I will close with this truth from the medical and scientific community. A two thousand and fifteen exhaustive study on the mental health of the LGBT community was published in The New Atlantis by Dr. Paul McHugh. Dr. McHugh is a former chief psychiatrist at Johns Hopkins University. His study, which was given immense credence by the American psychiatric...
Mr. Fannin, you're at seven and a half minutes now. If you could come to a close, you've spoken much longer than anyone else.
Fair enough. Fair enough. The point is this: Dr. McHugh summarizes at the end of a two hundred and eighty-five exhaustive study by saying this: "Some of the most widely held views about sexual orientation, such as the 'born that way' hypothesis, simply are not supported by science." And since the Bible was brought into it, and it is my expertise, I would argue for those that read and understand Galatians as liberty, I would urge them to read the letter to the Corinthians from the Apostle Paul, where he says to the believers, "Who came to the foot of that very same cross, asking for that same salvation in Jesus Christ?" I would ask them what it means when they say, "And such were some of you." In other words, in salvation, their lifestyles had changed. The argument from the Word of God cannot hold merit because it's not accurate. When someone is saved, their life and their lifestyle is changed. And thank you for your time and your patience, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lesby, who we indicated at the first of the meeting has some very pressing family matters. David's going to have to excuse himself, but I think he wanted to make a comment before he had to leave.
Just a brief comment, Mayor. And I guess I want to clarify that this issue is not one that's being promoted by the council or the mayor. It's really an issue, as Dr. Hinkle indicated, is being brought to us by the community. I think that's fair to say. And I certainly wanted to clear there on your behalf, it's not an issue that's being rushed either. I think we're giving it its fair due diligence. We want to certainly do that. I hate to leave this meeting, but I've got an equally as important issue that is facing me now. So with all due respect, I'm going to call it a night here.
Good luck. Returning to the list, we now have Mr. Richard Nelson?
Mayor, I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
You asked that the audience out in the hallway behave themselves. I would also ask that people in here don't laugh at speakers as they're speaking.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was unaware that something happened to you. Something happened?
There's a gentleman back here that was laughing at the last speaker.
Okay, well, let's not laugh at any speakers.
It's disrespectful. If we're going to have disrespect from one side, let's show respect both ways.
That was exactly my point the first time, Chuck. And I think we all should have as courteous a dialogue as we can. So I think we agree on that.
But having somebody loudly laugh at a speaker?
I'm sorry, Chuck, I missed that. But we'll do our best to make sure that doesn't happen again. Is that all right? Thank you. The audience would refrain from reacting to any speaker. Mr. Nelson?
All right. Mayor Prather, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Richard Nelson. I'm the executive director of the Commonwealth Policy Center, statewide nonprofit organization. And I'm here to speak against the proposed ordinances that you've been considering for some time. I've got a number of concerns. The first is that it seems to drag private sexual behavior into the workplace, at least the provision that talks about protection in employment. It makes behavior a protected status, which is very different from protecting race, ethnicity, or gender, which are inborn, benign, nonbehavioral characteristics. This law would be easy to abuse, and here's how. If employers should not ask about somebody's sexual orientation during the interview process, then how would they be held liable for not hiring based on somebody's sexual orientation? If an employer fires an open homosexual for poor job performance, the former employee can bring an unfounded charge and tie up the business owner's time and resources in court. I believe these laws violate conscience and religious freedom. They've been used to abuse conscience rights and punish business owners who are opposed, particularly materially participating through their goods and services, in a same-sex wedding. Florists like Baronell Stutzman, bakers like Erin and Melissa Klein, photographers like Elaine Huganen have been dragged through the courts, and they've been fined. Some of these fines have been onerous to the point where at least two of these examples have lost their businesses. To be clear, we're not talking about declining services to an individual. I think Georgetown is a fair place. I think Kentucky is. What we're talking about is an event that many people believe to have religious significance. I understand that those who favor this ordinance are fearful. But I don't believe this ordinance would shield them from fear. I do believe it will strike fear into another class of people: graphic designers, florists, photographers, and bakers, fear that they will face huge fines or even lose their businesses if they stand for their convictions. And right here in Georgetown, resident Blaine Adamson, as was mentioned just a little while ago, declined to fill a T-shirt order for a gay and lesbian pride event in Lexington. Blaine was happy to help them fulfill that order through another company at the same price, same quality of product, and yet instead, he was dragged through the courts. Spent five years of his time in the courts. A half million dollars in legal fees were accumulated to defend his rights of conscience and religious freedom. How is this fair to Blaine Adamson, a resident right here in Georgetown? I believe what this issue does, what this ordinance does, if it is passed into law, is it elevates the rights of sexual expression over the rights of sexual freedom. And if it passes, it will divide this community. And if it passes, it will divide this community. And for that reason, I respectfully ask that you oppose any ordinance to elevate sexual orientation and gender identity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Next on the sign-in sheet is Damon Morris. Tim, you might check for Damon Morris.
How are y'all doing? My name's Damon Morris. I'm here to actually just speak the truth and just say that this law that's trying, that people are trying to be passed, is not biblical. There's nothing more else that I can say. As a follower of Jesus, I've heard a lot of Christians say that, "I am, I am this, and I am that." That's not what we're called to do. We're called to love those, and we're called to preach the truth. And if they can't accept the truth, I don't know what else to say. It was hard for me to become a believer in Christ because I didn't want to accept my sin as sin. I don't blame the homosexual. I actually dabbled in that type of lifestyle when I was a kid because I was molested as a kid. This kept me out of the church because I knew this view. But thank God Jesus saved my life, even though I was, but He changed me, and He delivered me from that lifestyle, and now He uses me out in the streets, not in the churches, because we are the church, not the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Mr. Glenn Smith.
You've got a good echo out there. They can hear you now, so it's not hard to get to you. Thanks. A lot of folks I know and some I don't. My name is Glenn Smith. I'm a 40-year resident of Georgetown, living in Indian Acres, and raised four kids and helping raise 11 grandchildren as well here. So anyway, I'm coming here to speak against the idea of this ordinance. My honest judgment is, as many of these other people have said, is it will drive more wedges that already exist here that's going to drive more of those. It's going to keep us apart as opposed to allowing us to agree and come together. So I'm against it for that reason, as well as the others that have pointed out the lawsuits and so on that have been generated as a result of this. We've seen opportunity for folks to be sued who simply want to obey what their Christian beliefs are. I'm not here to talk about this from a church point of view, but just to state that it's not quite fair, if we're talking about fairness, to expect us as Christians to give up our rights that are guaranteed by the Constitution in order to provide fairness to someone else when it takes away the fairness that many of these other people have talked about. Also, it seems to me, almost, and you all have heard the saying before, but applies to me directly, is sometimes people cut off their nose to spite their face. I believe that's the case here. I believe what they will do is create hardships for themselves. I don't see, I've been here all these years. I'm out amongst people. I have grandkids who tell me all kinds of things that are going on. I've not heard about any problems that exist here. I believe I would have from them, but I just don't understand why folks feel as if this is going to assist them. I really honestly believe at some point, we're going to be heard as a result. And I appeal to you to not approve this. I think it's not good for us. It's not good for them. I honestly believe that. I love these folks. Most of them, a lot of them I know personally. They know I love them, or a lot of them do, and I just believe this is a big mistake. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next on the sign-in sheet is Frankie L. Fitch.
Thank you all for the opportunity of being here tonight and just to stand up and say that I am strongly oppose this bill. I have nothing against anybody. As a child of God, I love everybody, but I believe that love is in the right respect of what God's Word says. And I've listened to a lot of the things that have been said tonight out in the hallway. I think one of the things we're forgetting about is the people's right that this is going to infringe on. Those people have a right to say, "Hey, I believe it this way, so why do you want to change me?" We have just as much right as anybody else, okay? Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Next on the list is Matthew Tackett.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and fellow community citizens that are here in the room and listening, I'm proud to live in a republic where us as citizens, we get to hear, have our voices heard before our elected officials. And I was proud to fight for that right as a close air support pilot. Except for that time that I was in the military, I've been a lifelong resident of this community. It's a community that I'm very proud of, and I agreed with the mayor's comments that were posted online when this issue was brought up before the council before, that Georgetown is an inclusive community and a community of people who are loving and kind. I agree with your assessment on that, Mr. Mayor. Because of that, I wonder about the need for this ordinance. When it comes to doctors in government, there's not a lot of overlap in the jobs, except for one area, and I believe both doctors and governments live by a principle, which is first, do no harm. We must be sure when we exercise government power that it's the right thing to do, and that it's not only the right thing to do, but necessary. Because by definition, when we restrict liberty, which is what government can do, we must be sure about that. In fact, I do believe this ordinance will do harm and will violate that principle. It will have a chilling effect on the exercise of faith, and it will be used, make no mistake, it will be used to prosecute Christians for their faith. I respectfully and but vehemently disagree with Pastor Fox and other Christian representatives who have said that this will not affect Christians because of the carve-out for churches, congregations. Respectfully to those gentlemen, I would say that my faith is not supposed to be limited to be exercised within the four walls of a church, but rather, it's to be lived in our everyday lives and communities in the marketplace. How do I know that this ordinance will be used to harm Christians? Well, we don't have to guess because these ordinance have been passed, and as has been mentioned, they have already been used to prosecute a community member here. We've talked about that case. I won't go into it anymore, except to say that the Lexington Human Rights Commission executive director Raymond Sexton said in reference to that case, and I quote, "It's time for Christians in the marketplace to leave their Christianity at home." Is that the America we want to live in? Now, if we pass this ordinance, we are making the statement that we must surrender our fundamental First Amendment rights because it's the price of doing business in the marketplace. Ladies and gentlemen, the Constitution does not protect institutions or churches. It protects people. It protects Christian people as well as LGBTQ people, and when you exercise government power, somebody's going to get hurt. I respectfully submit that this ordinance is not necessary and is unwise. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tackett. Next on the sign-in sheet looks like Marcy Holiday.
Mayor Prather and council people, thank you for the right to speak, and I simply want to stand today. I've been a resident of Scott County since 1986, and I've been a child of God since my conception many years ago. But I want to say that I do favor ordinance, the fairness ordinance for Georgetown and Scott County, and I want to say that one of the things that has impacted my desire to do this is the fact that I have taught in Scott County for many years, and I had a tall, skinny boy in my classroom who had more energy than I did, but he was a good, sweet boy, and he was murdered in Miami last year, Daryl Burke. And I think that, I think that the fairness ordinance will ultimately lead to a more caring spirit between heterosexuals and the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holiday. Next on the sign-in sheet is John Warsham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council, for taking the time. Are we just to pay lip service to our pledge of allegiance, which at the end says, "One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all"? For years, this nation did just that. I look at this council and see that very few folks were around in the 60s when minorities were jailed, intimidated, and even murdered. And this includes, most definitely, those members of the LGBTQ community to just get the basic liberties which our Constitution said it would provide. Ultimately, it took legislation, which our Supreme Court upheld time after time, to finally bring us to this point, for job discrimination, housing discrimination, the ability to enjoy the product of everyday living for those disenjoyed Americans was a given right. Prejudice is something that can be lessened, not eradicated. The human condition won't allow that to happen. It can be lessened. But nowadays, you see signs, you don't see signs which say blacks are not allowed. Why? Because it is against the law. No Jews served. Are there still anti-Semites out there? You bet. But there are laws which prevent, which prohibit such action. If a person wants to live out the American dream and have their own business, then that business has an obligation to be open to all Americans regardless of race, creed, gender, and yes, even sexual orientation. Our county neighbor to the south is led by an openly gay man. He ran for the U.S. Senate and ran a successful first campaign with hundreds of thousands of votes cast in his favor. The city of Lexington is enjoying success that other communities could only dream about. The point is that bigotry and false condemnation of the LGBTQ community is still alive today, and the passage of this simple ordinance will guarantee, or at least hinder, further acts of discrimination. Gays in this community own businesses, pay taxes, volunteer, and make our town a better place to be as contributing citizens. This community is growing at a record pace. The paper today, The Herald Leader, said that the housing market in Lexington is so tight that even more people are moving, are moving here. By not giving this ordinance a reading, is that the message we want to send to prospective employers, prospective members of our town? WWJD, what would Jesus do? Jesus' message of acceptance and love has been swept away by the politics of fear, in my opinion. This ordinance deserves a hearing. As Thomas Jefferson wrote in the Declaration of Independence, "It is the goal of all Americans to have life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness as an ideal for us all." Giving this ordinance a reading will be a step forward in this dream of our founding fathers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warsham. Next on our list is Calvin Pitts.
My name is Calvin Pitts. I'm a retired airline pilot. I've seen many cultures around the world during the last 50 years. I'm also a former police commissioner from Sadeville. I grew up in Lexington, decided I wanted to climb up the social order, so I married a beautiful lady from Georgetown. But that wasn't enough. When I decided to retire, I thought I'd step up a little higher and move into the woods of Scott County, log house on a creek. And I was living a very peaceful, quiet life until I heard about something called the fairness doctrine. I'm offended. I'm offended because that nomenclature is so misleading, it implies that the leaders of this county have been unfair in the past, and therefore, we need a fairness doctrine. Having seen 83 summers, I do not believe that's true. You and your earlier leaders have made decisions that I've disagreed with at times, but that doesn't mean you've been unfair. It just means we disagree. Fairness doctrine implies something that is not true. So in my personal observation, we do not need such a fairness doctrine. I've developed a hearing problem. I have trouble sitting back there and hearing what's being said. Now, does that entitle me to a protected status, protected class, where I have to have a movement to guarantee that I have the same right that you do? We have a Constitution. We have the Bill of Rights. That guarantees the fairness that we need. So we do not need such an ordinance. I'm offended because the use of language is very important. And my friends on the other side say they want a protected class. After 83 years of observing social events and being active in politics, I understand that that's coded language, not for equal rights, but for special rights, and that is not fair. I've seen enough, as you have, to know that the protected class is code word, and that offends me. I want to live in peace. I want to honor everybody's right, but I do not accept the concept of protected classes. Our Constitution and our Bill of Rights give us that protection. So I oppose the passage of this ordinance, and I hope you, as our leaders, have enough wisdom to know that the wrong vote on an ordinance like this will have social consequences, it will have economic consequences, and yes, political consequences. Please be very careful in the use of your power to not impose upon the majority an agenda that is not what it appears to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Next on the sheet is Ms. Linda Glass. Uh, next on the sheet is Ms. Linda Glass.
I'm speechless. And I've, I feel a little, um, I'm frustrated, I'm a little embarrassed that there are so, that this issue has raised so much vitriol. I just, I never dreamed, I, I signed the petition, I might have been one of, I don't know, probably one of the earliest people to sign it, and I just never dreamed that it would cause this much of a ruckus. To me, it just seemed to be the right thing to do. Somebody already invoked the "What Would Jesus Do?" bracelet. And I remember when those came out, I think it was back in the seventies, and I kind of laughed at it. I thought it was kind of hokey. And I've never liked, I've, I've always kind of not thought well of Christians who wear their Christianity on their sleeves. But that little bracelet, I think today really means a lot, and I think about it. And I think if you think about it, what would Jesus do? It's, um, Butch and I came down here tonight to just express ourselves as being very strongly in favor of a fairness ordinance. And I really had never thought of it as a religious issue. I think it's a civil issue. It's about civil rights. It's not about religious rights. But religion seems to have been drug into it, and so I'm kind of following along with that. So anyway, I thank you all for your attention. I really, maybe your expressions belie what's going on inside, but I feel like you're really listening. And we really do appreciate it, uh, the opportunity to come here and express ourselves tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glass. Uh, next on our sign-in sheet is, uh, it looks like Jack Shoup.
My name is Jack Shoup. I am pastor of Grace Fellowship of Georgetown, and I'm honored to be able to speak to you today. First of all, I want to say I don't hate anyone, although right now, with many Kentuckians, I'm a little upset at some North Carolina people.
With you on that one.
But with many that have spoken, I oppose this ordinance for the reasons of taking rights away from Christians, we've heard already. And I want to throw in one other reason that I believe. First of all, I'm a pastor. I believe the Bible. I know many don't, but what I do, what I say, how I operate, I try to base on the Word of God. And as I've studied the Bible really intensely for over thirty-three years, I've discovered some things that God operates by spiritual principles. Our world has natural principles we live by, but there's spiritual laws that have implications if we break them. And when I read in the Bible, and it talks about King Hezekiah did that which was right in the sight of the Lord, and God blessed Israel. But if His, if Ahab came along, he said he did that which was evil in the sight of the Lord, and the nation fell out of blessing. It's apparent from the Bible, which again, I believe, that God judges the nation's level of blessing based on what civil governments approve. Some would say, what big deal is it that we have this ordinance or not? Well, I believe there's spiritual implications other than just whether it's fair to the Christian business or not. So thank you for your opportunity to speak with you, and again, I oppose this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Shoup. Uh, next on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Roger Ward.
Thank you all for being here and for giving us this opportunity to talk. I want to speak in favor of the ordinance. It is a civil issue. Does someone have the right to go into a business of their choosing and spend their money on what they want to buy? That's basically the question. Can they be denied a service because of what someone thinks of them? I mean, we don't wear bracelets to say, "I'm straight," or "I'm gay." So if someone's denied service, it's because someone's made a judgment. Why do we have an ordinance for race protection and religion protection? Because those people needed protection. Because when they were black and looking for a house, they were denied. And so then a law was passed to give them the access to that housing. Because they were Chinese, they were denied. Or they were Muslim, they were denied. So we have an ordinance not to take other people's rights away, but to give rights to the people who are oppressed, who feel like their rights are not being fully exercised. It's a very simple question of, in fact, fairness. Is it your job to extend the rights of a citizen to everybody in the county? Yes. Does it matter how they feel about that? Yes, absolutely. If they feel like their rights are opposed because of what people think about them, that's up to you to remedy. I watched the movie Hidden Figures a couple of weeks ago, maybe some of y'all have seen that too. At one point, a woman who wants to become a, an engineer, is black, is denied access to her education, to the profession that she wants because she is black and a woman. And she approaches a judge in Virginia and says, "Of all the choices you'll make today, which one will be important or talked about fifty years from now?" This can make a difference in people's lives for decades. It's a very high calling to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Miko Smith.
Hello again. My name is Miko Smith.
I'm sorry.
Quickly, no, that's okay. Not many people get it. Um, quickly, as an aside, I do want to say that I am employed at the Lexington Fayette Urban County Human Rights Commission, and I would implore each of you to look more deeply to these cases that have been spoken about already. Even call the office, I'm sure they would love to speak with you. Um, I'm even a church member with the director. I've served in Guatemala with him. He's awesome. I'm sure that he would love to speak with you to give some more details about some of the cases that have already been spoken about, if you have any more questions, because I think some details just seem to be lacking. Um, tonight, I know that I've already spoken with you about community development, but I wanted to speak from a religion aspect. I recently graduated from Georgetown, where I double majored in sociology and religion. I also am a student right now at the Baptist Seminary of Kentucky, where I am pursuing a Master of Divinity. Further, I interned for over a year at a local Baptist church in two thousand and sixteen, and I am currently on the leadership board for WMU for the Women on Mission. So I have a lot of religion background, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions if anyone has them. Quickly to end, because I know that this has been a long process, I hope that during the season of Lent, we can all be remembered of the great love that God has for each of us regardless. May we also hear and listen to the echoes of justice that ring loudly from the resurrection of Christ our Lord. We each tonight share in this great power, this liberating power, let us not only hear it and listen to it, but let us act on it by supporting justice for all with this fairness ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, next on the sign-in sheet looks like Rick Hardison.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and City Council, for this opportunity to have to speak. My name is Rick Hardison, and I've lived in Georgetown for the last four years. Um, I'm a transplant. It was a privilege of mine to serve as pastor at Great Crossing Baptist Church for several years, and I'm here to speak against the ordinance. In my opinion, I don't want to say anything that's theological, because this isn't really a complicated issue. From my perspective, it's, it's really simple. We just, as citizens of Georgetown, don't want to be forced to support something we don't support. You shouldn't be asked to pull for a basketball team you don't support. You shouldn't be asked to vote for someone you don't support. You shouldn't be asked to give money to a college you don't support. And as the son of two Christian entrepreneurs, one who makes wedding gowns for a living, and my dad, who's in the printing industry, both of them are potential victims of fairness ordinances. Where they, if they believe that their religious conviction was such that they should not participate in an issue, someone could file a lawsuit. And so I think this is a serious issue to be considered. I recognize that ninety-nine percent of economic transactions, this is not a factor. Someone's sexual identity, who they sleep with, what their prefer, it just doesn't enter into the world of commerce. It's a non-issue most of the time. But sometimes it does enter into the equation. Sometimes you are in a business situation, and you feel that your activity, your creative talent, your sweat equity, your risk tolerance, that that is being employed to actually support something you don't believe. And I don't think I should be forced to support something that I don't believe in. And so I think both sides here, let's be honest, both sides are claiming victims. The more conservative side is saying that Christians who are not wanting to support, say, a gay wedding, that they're being victimized, the homosexual community, and those heterosexuals who support the fairness ordinance are certainly claiming that there's victims when you go and ask for a service and are denied because of who you feel like you are. That, the difficulty of wanting a T-shirt, a wedding venue, a cake for a wedding, the difficulty of being denied that, if you're a homosexual, is not lost on me. I recognize that that would be a difficult and uncomfortable situation to be in. But I'm asking you, which is worse? To have to go through the difficulty of going down the street and finding a different baker to make your wedding cake? Or losing your home because you've been sued, and you've racked up hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees? Which is worse? It's just a lot worse, in my opinion, to be the victim of a fairness ordinance like this. And so I'm asking you to reconsider, or to, to not consider passing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardison. Uh, next on the sign-in sheet is James Fisher.
It's nice to be able to talk to you all today. And so thank you for hearing us. Um, I like to, uh, just to say that I work with a lot of kids. I'm a youth pastor as well. Um, I like to see what goes on with families, what happens with them, interact with them. I like to talk to them all the time. I, I do realize this is a big issue going on. I, I think it's a drastic issue. I think it's sort of a pointless argument that we're having here, because, uh, I've, I've been in Georgetown since I've been born. Uh, there's, there's equal opportunity for everybody. There's no one been oppressed. I think it's, it's just crazy. Why, like, like the old man said, I liked what he said, Senator saying, "Oh, well, you were calling us stupid earlier, like we didn't know how to make laws before." I mean, that's, we're calling everybody an idiot. And, um, I think it is unfair, um, sitting here trying to force me to do something that I don't believe in. Um, so that's, that's why I'm opposed against it, and I think it's going to end up oppressing a lot more people than, uh, what is intended to. Because I'm sure that they don't feel like it's going to oppress anybody. But, uh, I think we've already seen the facts that it does. You know, that, that hands-on original guy, he's a great guy. I know that guy. Honest man, great man, he wouldn't hurt you for anything. Um, so, um, Senator saying that he has to go to diversity classes, uh, so it would be fair to say that, well, maybe they need to go to diversity classes as well for a Christian, because we need to learn how to accept things. Uh, whether I like it or not, um, I have to accept talking with them. It's not saying I hate them, because I definitely don't hate them. If I hated them, I wouldn't mess with them. You see what I'm saying? So, um, just consider that I think it's going to oppress a lot more people than what is intended to. And I just thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Uh, Scott Mitchell.
My name is Scott Mitchell. I'm a twenty-five-year-or-so resident of Scott County. First, I'd like to say, you don't take away rights from one group of people to give extra rights to others. That should be a given. And I thank many on the side of the ordinance who've proved by their words that we don't need it, by talking about what a welcoming place Georgetown is, and how that everyone is good to each other, and all of that. That, to me, sounds like we're not needing a fairness ordinance. I'm opposed to this assault doctrine on moral grounds, economic grounds, constitutional grounds, and my own Christian heartfelt beliefs. This doctrine interjects government's hand in the free market of virtuous people that our founders gave us, and endangers the ability of business owners who put their blood, sweat, tears into building businesses to run as they see fit. It also violates the First Amendment of the free exercise of religion. Being a Christian is not something that I do, it is who I am. I'm a Christian all day long, and I'm guided in my business and my decisions of business by my principles. I should not be threatened by the government over who I hire, who I fire, or who I do business with. This certainly opens the door to frivolous lawsuits, even if the plaintiff knows nothing wrong was done to them, and that's kind of the angle I want to look at this. One doesn't only have to worry about wrongly losing a suit by a disgruntled ex-employee, but also the suit itself, backed by other people's money or even my own tax money, can bankrupt a business owner into settling the case where they've done nothing wrong. As we see with Blaine Adamson, he's still in this and has been in this for years over something that he didn't even do that was wrong. If you have to ask yourself, would people really abuse this? I think we've heard plenty of examples today of how this is being abused to ruin people who've spent their lives building a business. A New Mexico photographer is sued for not participating in a homosexual wedding. Uh, we know about the, the baker in Oregon for not making the cake. And right here, as we've talked about, Blaine Adamson, uh, right here in the Bible Belt. And I've got to ask, you know, does anybody know if we have a shortage of bakers or photographers or T-shirt printers where people can go and get things done? I don't think we do. I think if we really turn these things around and use a different analogy, we could see the fallacy in trying to enact things like this. For instance, if a black baker refused to make a cake for the KKK, would anybody be saying that they ought to be forced to make that cake? I think for too long, we look at feelings instead of the constitutionality of things, and instead of, uh, the possible abuse of things. If a Westboro Baptist people want a gay baker to make a cake for them with an anti-gay message, would we be saying that they ought to make that cake? I think we would let them have a pass and say, "Go somewhere else and get your cake," or your T-shirt, or your wedding pictures. I plan on opening an indoor shooting range here in Georgetown one of these days. It's been in the works for a few years now. But if I do a fundraiser for the NRA, should I expect to be sued into doing a fundraiser for an anti-gun group who would now say, "Well, this fairness doctrine ought to apply to us too"? If I do one for a hunting group, should I be expected to be sued for not doing one for an abortion group? Or, uh, an animal rights activist group? If I hold a wedding reception at my range, should I have to worry about a homosexual group now saying, "Well, you got to start holding wedding receptions for us too, or we're going to sue you out of business"? This is not about not serving someone who wa, who walks into your business. This is about being forced to participate in someone else's behavior. We should not open our city and businesses up to frivolous lawsuits that will cause good people to lose their lives. good people to lose their livelihood and homes to behavior that we can easily see is already happening elsewhere. I mean, it's not like this is at the beginning where we have to say, "I wonder if anybody will abuse this." I mean, we're living it right now. Thomas Jefferson said it better than I can, and I don't think any of you, nor me, or anyone out in the hall, is more intelligent than Jefferson, but he said, "No provision in our Constitution ought to be dearer to man than that which protects the rights of conscience against the enterprises of the civil authority." Shouldn't that mean a lot? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next on the sign-in sheet looks like Brooklyn Alcorn.
That's me. Mayor Prather, members of the City Council. My name is Brooklyn Alcorn. I've lived in Georgetown all twenty-one years of my life, which probably means that I'm the youngest person who will come before you today. I graduated from Scott County High School in the class of 2013 with a 3.95 GPA, having taken twelve Advanced Placement classes during my time there. And in May, I will graduate with honors from Georgetown College with a double major and a double minor in four years. I am a self-proclaimed lesbian, and I have known this about myself for many years of my life. During my time at Scott County High School, I helped found a gay-straight alliance so that members of the LGBTQ community could come together in a safe space where they felt they were not targeted from bullies at Scott County High School. I felt that this was warranted because me and my girlfriend at the time were often targets of said bullying. We were called unnatural, disgusting, queers, faggots, and dykes. We created this club so that people could come together and realize that they were not alone. And so I speak for all of those children today when I say that we need a fairness ordinance in Georgetown. It is difficult to come together knowing that some people do not care about you and do not love you for who you are. And it is even more difficult to realize that the community you have grown up in does not protect people like you and people who you love. And you look into a fifteen-year-old's eyes as they talk about wanting to kill themselves, and you tell them, "It gets better," but you don't know that it does. For those kids and for those who have lost that fight, I beg you, please consider passing a fairness ordinance in Georgetown. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Alcorn. Next on the list is Jana Strunk. Please.
Hi.
How there.
My name is Jana Strunk. Thank you, members of City Council, for serving the city. Appreciate you being here. I know you're smart people. I don't want to tell you a whole lot that you don't already know. Okay. Gracious. That's harder than it seems. Okay. So I just want to say I speak for many mommies who are putting their babies to bed right now, and I strongly oppose this ordinance. And I know you'll do the right thing. Thank you for serving.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm finished.
Next on the sign-in sheet is Tracy Parker.
Hello. My name is Tracy Parker. I am an ordained minister in the Christian Church Disciples of Christ denomination. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, people who have come to let your voices be heard and to exercise your civic duties in wanting to change, something that you feel passionately about. I speak in favor of the fairness ordinance. I speak from a person of faith as a follower of Jesus Christ because I feel it is mandated of me by Jesus to protect the least of these. And I think that is very clear in our scriptures. I also speak passionately as a patriotic citizen of Scott County, Georgetown. I have been a member of this community for the past thirty years, and I have acted in ways that I hope are always upright in protecting of those who need protection. It has been argued to great extent tonight... That is difficult to...
Yes, it is.
...that a fairness ordinance is not necessary because Georgetown doesn't have problems like this. It has also been argued that an ordinance such as this is set to persecute Christians who feel strongly opposed to the LGBTQ lifestyle. And I would like to ask you, if this will lead to persecution by Christian, of Christian business owners, wouldn't that be because they are discriminating against the LGBTQ community? So if that is the case, then we do need this ordinance to protect a minority group within this community. As a pastor, I have heard many, many, many troubled individuals come to me because they are gay or lesbian or bisexual, and they don't want to be. They want to be quote-unquote "normal." They don't want to be isolated. They don't want to be targeted for bullying. They don't want to be unloved. And as a pastor, I seek to show them love and acceptance and the grace of Jesus Christ that has been offered to all of us. Now, while much of what has been said tonight has come from the perspective of faith, I would like to remind this Council and our city leadership that if Christianity was of one accord, we would not have the many churches and denominations that are represented in our town. So obviously, not all Christians feel the same, and we have definitely seen that visible here tonight. And so I urge you to act on behalf of a community of people that have the assignment of protecting all its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Next on the sheet is Donna Redman.
This is going to come down a little bit. Good evening, Council, Mayor, everybody. My name's Donna Redman. I'm a relatively newcomer to Georgetown. I've only lived here since nineteen ninety-nine, so... But I'm retired, I really love Georgetown. My grandparents were from here. And I'm here to speak in favor to the fairness ordinance. I mean, I've been here since the start of the meeting, and it's kind of odd to me to hear people stand up here and argue against fairness and argue for fairness. To me, fairness is fairness. If you're in business, you're in business to either, to make money, you're in business to provide services, products, to everyone. You know, if you're in business for Jesus, then you ought to sell just Jesus stuff, you know? And some of us who may not, you know, for arguing against gay marriage, well, if there's only one photographer in town or one baker, and they're Christians and they feel offended because they see another person's sin, then not all of us have the opportunity to go around and shop around, you know? So if you're in business, you're in business. I'm, like I said, I've been retired for forty-four years. Twenty-four years in state government, twenty-one years in the United States Navy. And I remember when I joined the Navy that I had to hide. I am gay, and when I first went in, there was a certain thing on the contract that you had to say yea or nay on. And you had to hide, and you had to worry about, "Oh, if I ever get found out, will I lose, you know, will I be discharged? If I ever..." I taught school. I wondered, well, you know, I've spent all these years hiding who I was. And now what's so nice about the fairness and about acceptance that I see today is we no longer have to hide, we no longer have to be ashamed, we no longer have to think we're less than anybody else or that there's something wrong with us. I spent forty-five years of my life thinking there was something wrong with me, and there's nothing wrong with me. I am the way God made me, you know? And who I love is my business. And I've had friends that were jailed because, not for any other reason, then they slept with somebody of the same sex. Now, today, we don't have to worry about being incarcerated. Hopefully, we don't have to worry about losing our jobs. But we do need a fairness ordinance, you know? I mean, if fairness ordinance means that I, or you, or we aren't in business to judge somebody else's sin, you know, just because some Joe Blow sins a little bit different than I do, you know? You're in business, you're in business. And so let's bring all of the Georgetown community out in the open so we have a community to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Redman. Next on the list is Carrie Williams.
Hi, everybody. My name's Carrie Williams. I am heterosexual. I have a question. Well, first of all, let me say that I think if we boil all this down to an issue, it's sex in the bedroom. I don't think that it's any of my business who somebody else chooses to have sex with or who they choose to have in their bedroom, nor is it their business to say who I have sex with or who is in my bedroom. I would ask, I have met the nicest people here, Mr. Mitchell, he's here somewhere, and we're both sitting down because, you know, this hurt or that hurt. I mean, I've met really nice people here, and they're on the opposite side of the spectrum from me. We just think differently. If I saw them on the side of the road in a wreck, I wouldn't stop and ask them, "Are you Christians? How do you feel about fairness?" You know? I would just do the human thing and try to help them. And I would hope that they would, I really do think they would do the same for me. You know, I think that if a lot of people believe that homosexuality is a lifestyle, let me ask you a question. I think logically, if you say that, then the other logic that's involved is heterosexuality is a lifestyle as well. So when exactly in your life, heterosexuals, Christians, did you decide you were going to be heterosexual? You probably didn't. It probably just happened that you were, the same way it happens to homosexuals. They don't wake up one day and say, "Oh, I think I want to be the most hated person on the block." Why would anybody choose to live a lifestyle like this? It doesn't even make sense. Deep breath. I like to call a thing a thing, you know? I mean, we've heard beautiful things said here, but I like to boil it down to what it really is. I am for the fairness ordinance. Somebody I love more than probably my husband is homosexual. Didn't know it for eighteen years, but when he told me, you know, it's not like I loved him more than anybody one second, and then when he told me, I quit loving him. That doesn't happen, you know? I just wish that we could stay in our own boats. I have a very wise friend who says, "If it's passed into my nose, it ain't my business." And I would try to see if I could get you to think about that a little bit. If it's passed the end of your nose, not your business either. Why can't we stay out of each other's business and just go on about living life? We all want the same stuff. We all want to be loved. We all want to be successful. We all want to have friends. We all want to go to church. We all want to worship. It seems to me like, you know, it's easy when it's us versus them for all kinds of talk to happen, but I believe truly that we are all a lot more alike than we are different. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Lyseth Williams? I'm sure I mispronounced that. I apologize.
Hello. Good night to everybody. My name is Lyseth Williams. My ex-husband brought me to Kentucky in nineteen ninety with a three-month-old boy. You, Georgetown, embrace me with open arms. I was divorced in nineteen ninety-three, and I raised my two boys. I was a Christian single mother. I attended the church every Sunday. I took my boys to church every Sunday. A few years ago, my older son said, "Mother, I need to talk to you." And I would like to tell you that I embraced him with open arms, but I didn't. And later on, I found out that my boy, my son, was very depressed. And then I thought, "God loves my son. He's an amazing guy. He's the kind of guy that goes to the store and buys stuff that is on sale, and then he gathers it and he takes it to shelters for people that need clothing. I don't do that, and I call myself a Christian." So at that point, I decided my son is more important than any thing that, it doesn't matter. I need to love my son just the way he is because he's kind, he's gentle, he's an amazing person. So today, I am here to ask you, from the bottom of my heart, please consider embracing this fairness, the same way that you embrace me. You didn't know me. I'm from Central America, but you embrace me. And I'm just begging of you, please embrace them. Stop many other teenagers, adults, that are depressed, maybe committing suicide because they're not being accepted. They're human beings. They're amazing people. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We're at the end of the sign-in sheet. Well, I didn't keep you up to date on every page, but we've been methodically working them through. That concludes everyone who asked, or everyone who signed the signup sheet. But everyone's invested a lot of time this evening, and if there are others who have not had an opportunity to speak, which would like to do so, we'd be glad to hear from you. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward.
Hello. My husband and I, Georgetown didn't choose us. We chose Georgetown. My husband was one of the first group that was hired at the Toyota plant. When we first came to Georgetown from Louisville, Cherry Blossom didn't exist, and the town was really quite small. I think there was a Dairy Queen and a Jerry's, maybe. So we've seen a lot of growth and raised what was a very young family at that time here in this county. And this is my home, and I love it dearly, love it dearly. And my children love it dearly also. Through the years-
I'm sorry, ma'am. I didn't get your name for the record.
Mary Clanny.
Mary-
Mary Clanny.
Clanny, thank you.
Uh-huh, yeah. I'm nervous. I'm sorry. I'm not a speaker.
You're doing fine.
Anyhow, over the years, we chose, when we first came here, to do something very unconventional, and something very different at that time. We chose to homeschool. And at that time, that wasn't very popular, but I will say that doing something very different in this community, we were loved, accepted. My children had many opportunities. And through the years, we have seen a place that has embraced people from all walks of life, who chose many different avenues of life. And in fact, I do know many people here today and have lived a long time with them in this community. I have not experienced unfairness. And I have children ranging from thirty-two to twenty, and I honestly was really kind of surprised at the fact that we needed, in our community, a community that has experienced massive growth. I can't even explain to people what this community was when I first moved here, and what it is today. And so many different political spectrums, everything. And I love this community mainly because it is so fair. And I don't think that a community with this kind of growth, and with everything that we have experienced who have lived here, if this was a climate of unfairness, and that's basically all I wanted to say. I don't believe in giving special rights to anybody. I believe that we're all covered under the Constitution to live according to our conscience. And not everybody's going to embrace that, and not everybody understood a different lifestyle that we chose for our family. However, I had the right, because of the Constitution of this land, to live according to my convictions. And I'm thankful for that. And that's what I would like to see you all protect. We're all covered under that. But to give special, I think that diminishes the rights of the majority. And that's basically all I wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Was there, yes, ma'am. Please come forward.
Hello. I'm Carol Tudor, and I was not planning to speak tonight, but I've been listening out in the hallway. I am here, and the reason I decided to say something, I'm here for my kids. And I am a young mom here in Georgetown. I did not grow up here. I married a Tudor. I am Roy and Debbie Tudor's daughter-in-law, and I'm married to the middle Jeremiah Tudor. This ordinance does not affect me directly. I am straight. I am married to a man. But I, as a mom, when I think about my kids growing up here, I don't know who they'll be, but I know that there'll be whoever God created them. And I want them to know that this is a community, that they are safe, that they are loved. And as their mom, I don't want to feel if one of my children was gay, that we couldn't stay. This is our home, and I want them to know that they are as valued as anyone else. I hear people, and I understand the concern about businesses, and being worried about being in a lawsuit, and I understand that. And I think that there's going to have to be a lot of debate in how we would move forward with that to make sure that all people were protected. But I wanted to speak tonight as a mom, just to say that when I tell my children, all people are created equal, and then I think, what do I do to act on that? So that's why I'm here tonight, so I'm going to act on it. And so I am here in favor of the fairness ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Tim, was there someone else that, yes?
Hi. If you could excuse my nervousness, I've never been in front of a so powerful group of people before. I'm a senior at Scott County High School. I've been here my entire life, and this is where, this is my home, and this is where I've grown up. I have been president of the Gay-Straight Alliance Club at the high school for the past three years, and I have seen personally the current state that the high school is in and its students are in. And it was getting better for a while, and now we've gone back down a path that is not exactly positive. The issue with this is that I have, I can count on my hands and on many other people's hands, because I couldn't count them on just mine, the amount of people who have told me that they are suicidal because of the fact that they can't feel safe or protected in the high school that they're in. This isn't just a problem of their lives being lost. It's a problem of the education that they're getting, the idea that they couldn't get this education through it. And they couldn't get all of these different opportunities that people who advance themselves in society need. Another aspect of this that I have realized is that this doesn't just affect high school kids, although I do think it would be helpful to them. This affects the adults that are trying to make it in this county. And this county is one of the fastest-growing counties in Kentucky. It's gained, it's like doubled in population over like thirty years or less than. And if our population is going to continue to grow, and the population of homosexuals and members of the LGBTQ plus community is going to grow, and I definitely think that if this ordinance doesn't go through this time, there will be mention of another one soon. And the populations that come here will want to be here safely and all of that. And the lady who was here earlier, who spoke of the economics, Toyota bringing so many people here, and other businesses bringing so many people here, we might end up stemming that flow if we do not accept things that broaden our horizons to people who need to be here, people who we need to work the jobs that come here. We'll lose businesses, and it won't be as profitable as if you were to reject it. Once again, I just remind you that this isn't just picking whether you want to serve as someone or not. People's lives are at stake. People's entire livelihoods will go down the drain. People's entire goals here in Georgetown, they'll have to pack up and move, and some of them who have already moved so many times will not be able to move again. And I ask you to just please keep this in mind when you're considering this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't get your name for the record.
Ashley Coleman.
Ashley Coleman?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Yes, sir.
My name is Jason Preston, and I actually live in Stampin' Ground. And I obviously didn't sign up because I didn't come really prepared to speak tonight. I'm as probably as easy and laid-back guy as you meet. I'm very non-confrontational. I'll do anything to avoid a confrontation. But I do believe that as citizens, we have a right and a duty to speak up when the opportunity presents itself. And I sat out there and listened for a long time. There's been a ton of very good arguments. But I keep coming back in my mind to thinking that this is an unfairness, I can't think of the word now, I'm sorry, ordinance. And I also keep hearing people say, this will be a detriment to the state and to the county of Scott, oh, Scott County, or the city of Georgetown. And it makes me think how unfairly Georgetown would be treated because they refused to pass what is called a fairness ordinance. The mere fact that someone would say, we were going to treat you unfairly because you refused to pass this, tells me that it's a very unfair ordinance to pass to begin with. And it puts on the city a burden of, you have to do this, or else we will treat you this particular way. I've lived here now for probably about fifteen years. We moved to Georgetown exactly for what some of these people said, because it was a very growing community. We fell in love with Georgetown. We love it here. We love the fact that we can be part of a community. You had a man talk about, from the Kiwanis, about having the Fourth of July parade. We love to have the Fourth of July parade. You know what? We think it's great. If there are people that want to participate it that don't hold the views that I hold, and just in case you're wondering, I am against this ordinance. And so I think it's unfair to say, we will treat you a specific way if you do not pass this ordinance. To me, it tells me it's an unfair ordinance and not a fair ordinance. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Adams, did you wish to address the council?
I've been sitting out here listening to this last maybe hour and a half. And the question that comes across me more than anything is our Bible's been written over two thousand years. And if you look around the world right now and see the problems what's happening, it's describing this step, it's just one step for perilous times to come, and it's heading that way. We're trying to eliminate the church, trying to eliminate a person's right. I don't care what other people think, whatever, but I had the right to say or disagree with someone without getting hurt, or sued, or so forth. You look at the Scripture and get into the Hebrew and Greek knowledge, you will see what's happening. It says, in time to come, policing will be a thing of the past. Bad water's going to come. This is just another point that's just going to help progress what's really coming to be. I do not agree with this ordinance. I believe people has the right to say no to certain things. Me, I don't, it don't bother me. I know a lot of people knows what I do, and I go ahead and serve them. It don't bother me. But when you look around, you look at the world and see all the problems that's coming, and the Scripture said, two thousand years ago, this was going to happen. That's the reason why we're here right now today.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard by the council? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Parker. I'm not much of a public speaker, so I'm sorry if I stutter a little bit. I have lived in Georgetown my entire life. I have always felt welcome. And I am very fortunate because of that. I keep hearing a lot of people saying, well, I haven't seen the discrimination. I've lived here my whole life, and that's wonderful. I'm so glad that they haven't. But the fact that it hasn't happened to you doesn't mean that it doesn't happen. And if it happens to one person, that is one person too many, and it's unacceptable. If you haven't had that in your life, I am so happy for you, and I feel like you are so blessed in so many ways, just as I am. But perhaps we need to clean our glasses a little bit and look past the end of our nose to see the hurt of others and to help them. I think that is what Jesus really would want, if we want to bring Him into it. And I'd like to point out that letting someone else have equal rights does not take away yours. You don't shine less because someone else gets to. And it's very frustrating for me to hear that, because I was raised to treat everyone the same way, no matter what they look like, no matter how they act, even if they're hateful to you, you give them love. That's why I wear this sash. It says, Unlearn Fear and Hate, and that's exactly what we need to do. And I don't think that this ordinance is asking for extra rights for the homosexual community. I think if they were asking to not pay taxes like the church, that would be more apt for some special rights. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did you get her? Oh, good. Yes, ma'am. You may.
My name is Yvonne Thayer. Apparently, we're related somehow, cousins to Damon Thayer. Not trying to influence anybody. But anyway, my husband and I moved here from Colorado almost five years ago. I wanted, when we were in Colorado, it was really my decision, really, to move to a more rural community, because I grew up in Albuquerque, New Mexico. When I first moved here, I would say that to people. I moved here from New Mexico, and everybody would say to me, oh, you're from Mexico. And I took offense to that. It really hurt my feelings. But I think there comes a time when we have to own who we are. I'm a U.S. citizen. I'm proud to be from Albuquerque, New Mexico. I'm sitting here, listening to some of the younger kids from the high school. This is nothing new. I'm fifty-one years old. When I went to high school, we had folks in our high school that were gay or lesbian. This is nothing new. What alarms me is, what I keep hearing about is all these suicidal thoughts. I think maybe we need to have a different discussion, other than fairness, maybe, and I hate to say, but maybe we need to invest more in mental health and help some of these people. You know, you claim to be who you are, be proud of it. I'm proud that I'm from Albuquerque, you know, that I'm a citizen of the United States. It bothered me that people thought I was from Mexico, because somehow they felt I was here illegally. You have to own who you are. That's fine. But I am against the ordinance, because I just feel that it's not necessary. Just observing what happened here tonight, we're all in a room. We're just expressing ourselves. I don't see any hate here. I go to a Baptist church here in town. Our preacher openly says, we will welcome anyone, no matter what your race is, what you look like, what you sound like, et cetera. I just really feel that maybe we're merely having the wrong discussion. Maybe we need to, as I said, invest more time and energy in the high school. We've had a lot of problems with, since I've been here, getting the money together, the plans together, whatever, to build, you know, a high school. I feel bad for these kids that are having these thoughts about suicide. But again, own who you are. If you want to have a pride festival, have a pride festival, you know? We don't have to participate. You don't have to participate in things that we may, you know, value. But just, as I said, just maybe we need to have a different discussion. Again, I don't think that anybody here, you know, I don't discriminate against anybody. As a matter of fact, I'm a small business owner myself. I have worked for gay men before in the past. I didn't discriminate about working for them. I chose to do it. It was a job. This is, that does have to be taken into consideration also. You know, it's a choice of who you serve, in other words. That was my choice. It was a matter of income, you know, of keeping my business going. So I don't feel like we need to, I don't know, tell people who they can and cannot. I mean, that's their choice. In other words, we all have choices in life. And I guess I'm just trying to say, own up to who you are, and don't try to pass something off onto somebody else, you know? Just be yourself, you know? The word's been thrown around here a lot about love. Again, God loves everybody, you know? We may not like the lifestyle, but we love the person. So that's all I have to say. I am against the Fairness Act. I don't believe we need it. I think that this town, as far as I've seen, this county is fine. I think that this town, as far as I've seen, this county is fine. Um, maybe I'm out of the loop and don't know of the issues that are going on with people that are having a discrimination. Um, again, maybe that's a different conversation that needs to be held. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thayer. Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Graham. I'm Billy Graham's son. Not the same one, my dad and Billy Graham.
I got it.
But I'm a retired preacher, and, uh, I just wanted to say the reason we're against this ordinance, and I know, there's no way y'all can understand this. But there's coming a day, and the Bible tells us this is coming, so we're looking for it. We know it's coming. There's coming a day that when we look for a pastor, assistant pastor, something like that, and somebody comes in and they happen to be a woman, there's gonna be a law that we can't say no. If we say, "I'm sorry," we don't, we believe the Bible teaches us to be a man, that's to be the pastor. Or if somebody comes in and they're gay, but they want to be the pastor, like the lady in here earlier, I mean, that's fine. I mean, whatever their church wants to do, I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem when you, as an organization, pass a law that tells us that we can't discriminate against anybody. 'Cause I'm telling you, when I say that I'm sorry, I cannot hire you, I'm discriminating according to the law. So I'm gonna be kicked out of my own church because I won't hire that person, because I will not hire that person. I cannot. Because biblically, that's the Bible and that's the law. And I'm gonna follow God's law. I mean, you know, it'd be, it'd be like me coming to you and saying, "By the way, I was born a, a bank robber. I can't help myself, but you have to hire me." You know, I go down into the bank, I want a job down here. I've robbed three banks. I was born that way, I can't help myself. Now, I know it's not gonna get that stupid, at least I hope not, but it's almost that bad. I mean, literally, it's come to a day that we cannot make the decisions based on what we, and, and look, again, I, I've said this for years. If I had a homosexual couple that lived next door to me, I'd be as friendly to them as anybody. If they invited me over for, they were gonna cook out and wanted me to come over, I'd go over and sit down with them. Now, if they get out in their backyard and start messing around, I'm gonna have a problem with that. Just like I would if my neighbor was a man and woman, they got out in the backyard and started messing around. I would have a problem with that. So we can't pass laws and so forth that, that restrict us from what we believe as Baptist preachers. We believe this, "You don't want to come to our church? That's fine, it's your business." And like, like the lady said a while ago, and she goes to the same church I go to, we don't stop anybody from coming to our church. If, if it's a homosexual or something like that, they want to come to our church, I'll, they're invited in and, and I love them to death. But I'm sorry, we have a position on that where, that keeps us from placing you in a position as a deacon or something like that. It's just the way it is. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Yes, ma'am.
Um, my name's Sydney Anderson. I'll be swift, as I have the two-year-old that's been a little interrupting. I apologize. Um, first, this topic makes me emotional, not because I am gay, because I'm not, but because I have a dear friend and a mother and a sister who lost a sister because of so many bad things that just happened in life. And I get it. But I need us to all rewind to seventy years ago when I was an abomination, when people who sit in this position could say that I couldn't go in somewhere. And that is the exact same thing that is being said now. Christians had the same standpoint then. And there is nothing wrong with their standpoint beyond the point that it limits somebody's right to live their life. And that's not fair. My son, I'm here on behalf of him because I don't care how he turns out, as long as he is happy and not restricted, as long as he can go and get an apartment with whoever he wants to get apartment with, because he is him. Because like I said, seventy years ago, somebody could possibly easily say that, "No, he is a black little boy or a black man," and he may not do this. This is the same exact argument, because this is the same, you're restricting somebody's life. And that's not fair. And this whole thing goes down to the fact that when all is said and done, everybody deserves to be fair. And down to the fact that somebody might not want a gay preacher in their church, I promise they don't want to be there. That's how that goes. But, I mean, that, and I'm sorry that, I know there's been so many things said on both sides, and I promise that I know that every Christian that said that they would help somebody that was gay would help them. I believe them, down to the core of my heart. But when all is said and done, if you're saying that it's not okay to just have a piece of paper, one line in an ordinance saying that you can't say no to them because of who they choose to be in life, who they were born to be, then that makes you wrong. And that's all I have to say. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yes. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Brian Fulcher. I live here in Georgetown, been here for fourteen years. Um, I think tonight we are, uh, dealing with really a battle of two worldviews. Uh, certainly, it's a very emotionally charged issue. Um, and it is something that, uh, creates a, a wave of emotion on both sides. I would state that I am not in favor of the, the fairness ordinance simply because I don't believe it's gonna give to the community what they're looking for. Uh, I think, and a lot of these arguments that are being made, we're comparing apples with oranges. Um, emotional stability, self-worth, self-esteem, you can't get that from a law. And, uh, uh, and we can't control, unfortunately, there's a lot of people that do a lot of horrible things in the name of Christianity or whatever. We can't always control, uh, people's bad attitudes and, and horrible actions and wrong attitudes. We have laws on the books. If someone assaults you, you prosecute them to the full extent of the law. We have laws on the books for all types of discrimination. And there's, there's a, probably a thousand attorneys lined up outside. If you want to file a lawsuit, there'll be someone that'll take your case. But I, I ultimately think that, uh, what is being asked for has a lot of unintended consequences that, we're not gonna rehash all that, that's been mentioned, uh, nauseam tonight. And I think, uh, we really need to be very careful, as the doctor said, when you wield the heavy hand of the government, there will be consequences. Um, and every time a decision is made of this magnitude, there will be things that happen that, that were not foreseen. And, uh, I think to compare this to the prejudices in the past, uh, is really not a, a good comparison because that was a systematic, institutionalized, uh, obvious system that, that was widespread, something that was very clear, a fixed thing that, that was, uh, very obvious when it comes to, uh, there's only one race, the human race. We all have different shades of skin, but you know, that's, that's, people's foolishness kept them from doing what was right. But I think what is being argued for in this ordinance, I just don't think it's gonna deliver what they're looking for. And I think ultimately, um, this is, is an unnecessary, uh, situation that would create some very unwanted, unintended consequences. And, um, I just think, uh, we need to be very careful and, uh, be, probably be best not to have it go forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Harold.
Well, I want to take us back to what this is really about.
Well, Harold, just for the record.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Haroldine Jessie. I was born here fifty-seven years ago, John Gray's Ford Memorial Hospital. Went to college here, graduated from the public school system here. I'm a gay Georgetown resident and have a wonderful husband, his name is Steven. We own a business here. We've invested over a million dollars in the downtown here, our own money, continue to invest in some properties that otherwise would deteriorate, and we will continue to do that. And it's been said here how wonderful Georgetown is, and it is. It is, this is a loving place. But people like Steven and I, we're, we would, it would be hard pressed for you to do something against us for being gay. Go ahead and try it. But that has happened to us. And the police chief back here can attest to what I'm about to tell you. We have the most sophisticated security system that you can buy in the United States. And the reason for that, when we got married in Georgetown just a year ago, someone threatened to kill us. And it was a serious threat. When you display a series of guns and you put on social media, "If someone doesn't kill you, I am." And the local police department, our security system is so sophisticated, sometimes they even use it. They want to see what we got. Now, we take extraordinary measures, and we shouldn't have to do that. And then the second thing, we're not asking for extra rights. We're asking for the same as all Americans. Housing, employment, service and public accommodations. Sometime outside this meeting, if any of you want to have a conversation, let's take a walk. I'll show some things that will shock you. Two young men in this town in national food chains attacked because they were gay. Another young man, simply doing his job, was attacked at a national chain in this town because he was gay. Don't tell me these things don't happen, they do. And I told people coming in here, "Probably I shouldn't speak." I even told the people ahead this up. Some people don't want to hear my truth. But we live it. But all that being said, even the threats against our life, that is nothing compared to these kids who go through life concerned that because of being who they are, they're not worthy, and they do commit suicide, even in Scott County. So let's get our heads out of the clouds, and let's get down to business here. I'm a Christian, but I'm not here because I'm a Christian. I'm here because I'm a citizen of the United States of America. I'm a taxpayer, own a business here, own multiple pieces of property here, and I pay a lot of taxes. And guess what? I'm gonna continue to pay a lot of taxes in Georgetown because we're getting ready to buy something else. And we're gonna continue to pay taxes in Georgetown. So I'm not asking you for anything extra. Don't do it for me, but do it for those people who don't have a voice, and there's a lot of them. There's a lot of gay people in Georgetown. A lot of it has to do because we live adjacent to Lexington. All kinds of people are moving here. And Georgetown is a wonderful place. Don't use that as an excuse for continually having people marginalized just because who they are. I'm not talking about awesome that you're a Christian, wonderful. Guess what? I'm a Christian too. It's not a crime to be gay. It is possible to worship the same God and be a Christian. I know that's hard for some people to accept. But taking it back, it's not about religion, but it's been, religion's been brought in here tonight. It's about public spaces. If you have an apartment complex and you don't rent, some of them because they're gay, that's not right. If you lose your job or can't get a job because you're gay, that's not right. If you go into public accommodations, into a business that has a tax license in the city of Georgetown, and they don't serve you because you're gay, that's a problem. Now, that's what we're talking about here. I'm not worried about what's going on in your church. That's, that's not, that's your business. But here again, I'm gonna close with this. And I know a lot of you my entire life. And I want you to think about this. Tonight, when you go to bed and you close your eyes, it's hard to walk in other people's shoes. People are asking for, "Is it okay to be gay and rent a house in Georgetown? Is it okay to get a job in Georgetown and be gay? Your largest employer Toyota says it's okay." You might want to just think about that, too. Service, is it okay to go in a restaurant, Georgetown, or work in a restaurant because you're gay? Should be, be attacked because you're gay and you work in a restaurant? Should you be attacked because you're a customer in a restaurant and you get attacked because you're gay? No. Should you be in Scott County High School and be attacked because you're gay? No. So this is a pretty big picture. It's got nothing to do with religion. It's about people's rights. And we are all equal in the city of Georgetown and the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jessie. Yes, sir.
I hate to be the last one. My name's Dave Coons. Do you have time for one more?
Oh, we, we've got time for anybody that wants to speak.
I was gonna take my wife out for her birthday tonight, but she dragged me here and had not planned on speaking.
This has got to be more.
I want to get done as fast as you do. Um, let me just say thanks for, uh, letting me speak, and I really appreciate the civility just with which this conversation can take place. And, um, just for the sake of argument, like my friend here, I just want to assume that I'm not a Christian and this has nothing to do with religion. Um, two of the observations that I just want to point out, uh, as I've listened tonight, um, I've, I've heard a lot about bullying and name-calling, uh, the gentleman that was murdered in Florida, um, and different things like that. I know there's no particular bill that you all are considering or ordinance that you're considering, so we can't read the language or know exactly how that would affect Georgetown. Um, but I, I fail to see, I guess, how that type of an ordinance would really affect a bullying culture or name-calling or threats or those types of things. So I, I just don't think that's a really apples to apples. Um, and as the, uh, the Blaine Adamson case has been brought up, I, I was just thinking in my own mind, so what if Blaine Adamson, uh, was approached by a heterosexual couple and asked to produce the exact same T-shirt, and he were on conscious, conscientious grounds to refuse them service? Would he, by any ordinance that we would pass, would he be in violation of that ordinance if he was to deny service to a heterosexual couple for the same product? If you say, "Yes, he would be in violation," then that doesn't seem to be protecting the LGBTQ community. It's really just protecting everybody, and he really would have no rights of conscience to deny any product to anybody. And in that case, it would apply to everybody, if that makes sense. If you're to say, "No, he would not be in violation of the ordinance," then it seems like he would only be really obligated to meet the request of the LGBTQ or protected community. And that, to me, does not seem fair. So just that kind of scenario made me think that the ordinance doesn't seem sufficiently clear to really balance the rights that should be protected for the small business owner as well as our citizens. So because of that reason, I would not be in favor of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm almost afraid to ask, have we exhausted public comment?
We're good.
He doesn't want to call you, does he, huh?
Three hours and ten minutes later, we can, we can check that one out. This was an important exercise for the council's time. I think it was an important time, uh, for each of you all in the audience, and I hope a whole bunch of folks watching at, at home. I do appreciate that, uh, the la, our, our last gentleman, Mr. Coons? Coons, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Coons, uh, acknowledged that we do not have an ordinance, uh, before us specifically to address. And the reason we don't have an ordinance to specifically address yet is, uh, simply because we're early in this process. Uh, when a group of citizens, uh, came to the council and asked that a fairness ordinance be considered, uh, our response was, uh, and I think it was a collective response, people can say their own mind in just a moment. I don't know of any time in my thirty-five years of public service that, uh, a, a group has come to the, uh, fiscal court or the city council and ever asked that an issue be considered where we simply said, "No. We're not gonna consider that." I don't think that's appropriate public policy. When, when the representatives of the, uh, fairness ordinance approach the council and ask that we can- Unfortunately, it generates more controversy than we wish it did. But we also knew that the way the council has approached this business on every other issue we've undertaken has been to first understand what we're being asked to undertake, to understand the various components of a fairness ordinance, to understand the ordinances that other communities have enacted. And in the process of learning more, and I've said this to the council before, but our audience changes, and I want folks to all hear this, that this was not the council's ordinance to start with, and it wasn't the administration's ordinance to start with. It was brought to us by a group of our citizens. Now typically, if, if we were undertaking an ordinance ourselves, we would have been doing the homework on this ordinance for a number of months ahead of time. We would have understood the legal structure. We could have been in a position to help the council understand all of the ins and outs of the proposed legislation. Since this scenario was different, we are learning with the council. And we think we have an obligation to study the issue and understand the issue. In that regard, we, we were delighted to respond to Ms. Sames' request that we send to the council all of the existing seven or eight ordinances that have passed across Kentucky. So council can have time to review those, absorb what's in those, and ask the right questions. We also wanted, as we learned more about state law and how it relates to fairness or local fairness ordinances, I've learned a lot that I simply did not know when this issue was first brought to the city council. It's why I thought it very important that I, that I asked Andrew Hartley to do a very condensed version, and he got this down to two pages that you have all received a copy of, that explains the general law that surrounds the choices the council can make about a fairness ordinance. What we've learned is that there is not one size fits all in fairness ordinances. We have learned that there are a number of decision points within the structure of the ordinance where the council can decide to make an ordinance more restrictive or less restrictive. And there are a number of those decision points that we would not dare draft an ordinance for your consideration until such time as the council understands all of that structure and council has an opportunity at those decision points to help construct this ordinance for consideration about what's best for this community. There were questions about why is this being pushed so fast? To the contrary, we've tried to be very diligent in providing appropriate information for the council and plenty of space to talk about it and plenty of time to talk about it. I think the goal is to get to the best possible ordinance, not to get to an ordinance quickly. So we, we've, we've had an opportunity to hear from citizens. I am confident that as we, if we move forward, and I say that advisedly because city council has the right to stop any conversation they want at any point in time. The majority of city council on a voice vote or a roll call vote can stop any consideration of any issue we have underway. Some have made it clear to me, both members of the public and members of our council, have made it clear that they are simply opposed to the very concept of a protected class that focuses on gender identity and sexual orientation. And that if a special class is created through a fairness ordinance, they are against that ordinance, period. What that tells me is the content of the ordinance that we think should be discussed doesn't matter. There are those who will oppose this ordinance purely because it creates a protected class of any description. Now, it is my hope that in, in the spirit of work and understanding that the council has undertaken on every other issue that's come before this body and this room, that we'll do our homework and that we will be thorough and that we will go through an appropriate step-by-step process to get to the best outcome we can for Georgetown. But I do want to be clear, for the audience and the council's sake, that if, if people don't want to go through the process of learning where the decision points and what the ordinance might look like, because they're not going to consider it anyway if it creates a protected class, council has the right to make that motion now.
Mayor, I'll make the motion. We table this issue.
To eliminate consideration. Okay, motion's been made that we not learn more, that we eliminate all consideration of a fairness ordinance after this vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. So what I'm going to ask, if any council member wants to make a statement, they can. If they don't, that's fine. And then I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. And we'll see if this council is willing to even consider what an ordinance will look like.
Mayor, I'm willing to consider. I'm willing to move forward and here, keep the discussion going and learn more. So I'm not going to vote to table, or I'm sorry, I'm going to vote to continue to move forward.
Thank you.
As I will, too.
Well, it's unfortunate Mr. Lesby had to leave. He clearly thought the, the issue should be considered further, but we will vote with what's here tonight. If there are, if there are not further comments, shall we call, let me make this, sometimes these ordinance get confusing, which way you're voting means what. A vote yes is voting that we have no further consideration of a fairness ordinance, and we end the discussion now. A vote no is a vote to continue to learn and to consider consideration of a potential ordinance. Everyone's clear on that? Would you call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
No.
Mrs. Singer Early? Mr. Showalter?
No.
Mrs. Tingle Sains?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
Your Georgetown City Council has voted to not consider a fairness ordinance regardless of its content. Thank you all for your attendance tonight. I'm going to take about a five-minute break. The bladder needs it.
I'm going to get that right.
My name's Dave Coons. Do you have time for one more? Oh, we've got time for anybody that wants to speak.
I was going to take my wife out for her birthday tonight, but she dragged me here and had not planned on speaking. I want to get done as fast as you do. Let me just say thanks for letting me speak, and I really appreciate the civility just with which this conversation can take place. And just for the sake of argument, like my friend here, I just want to assume that I'm not a Christian and this has nothing to do with religion. Two of the observations that I just want to point out as I've listened tonight, I've heard a lot about bullying and name-calling, the gentleman that was murdered in Florida, and different things like that. I know there's no particular bill that you all are considering or ordinance that you're considering, so we can't read the language or know exactly how that would affect Georgetown. But I fail to see, I guess, how that type of an ordinance would really affect a bullying culture, or name-calling, or threats, or those types of things. So I just don't think that's really apples to apples. And as the Blaine Adamson case has been brought up, I was just thinking in my own mind, so what if Blaine Adamson was approached by a heterosexual couple and asked to produce the exact same T-shirt, and he were on conscientious grounds to refuse them service? Would he, by any ordinance that we would pass, would he be in violation of that ordinance if he was to deny service to a heterosexual couple for the same product? If you say, yes, he would be in violation, then that doesn't seem to be protecting the LGBTQ community. It's really just protecting everybody, and he really would have no rights of conscience to deny any product to anybody. And in that case, it would apply to everybody, if that makes sense. If you're to say, no, he would not be in violation of the ordinance, then it seems like he would only be really obligated to meet the request of the LGBTQ or protected community. And that, to me, does not seem fair. So just that kind of scenario made me think that the ordinance doesn't seem sufficiently clear to really balance the rights that should be protected for the small business owner as well as our citizens. So because of that reason, I would not be in favor of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm almost afraid to ask, have we exhausted public comment? I think. We're good.
He doesn't want to call you, does he, huh?
Three hours and 10 minutes later, we can check that one out. This was an important exercise for the council's time. I think it was an important time for each of you all in the audience, and I hope a whole bunch of folks watching at, at home. I do appreciate that, the last gentleman, Mr. Coons? Coons, I'm sorry. Mr. Coons acknowledged that we do not have an ordinance before us specifically to address. And the reason we don't have an ordinance to specifically address yet is simply because we're early in this process. When a group of citizens came to the council and asked that a fairness ordinance be considered, our response was, and I think it was a collective response, people can say their own mind in just a moment. I don't know of any time in my 35 years of public service that a group has come to the fiscal court or the city council and ever asked that an issue be considered where we simply said, no, we're not going to consider that. I don't think that's appropriate public policy. When, when the representatives of the fairness ordinance approach the council and ask that we consider an ordinance of this type, we knew that this issue generates controversy. Unfortunately, it generates more controversy than we wish it did. But we also knew that the way the council has approached this business on every other issue we've undertaken has been to first understand what we're being asked to undertake, The second lowest bid that we received, a credible bid, was $190,000. That is more than the amount of the grant. What we have proposed to the Church and what we propose to the Council tonight is that we undertake the, the second lowest bid, which is a valid bid, at $190,000, that the city pay that additional $90,000 above the amount of the grant with the understanding that we will be paid back that money over a five-year period from the Church as additions to their annual lease payment. So, this is simply a tool for us to get that grant completed all the while, but it will require us approving a contract with Structural Systems Repair Group for the roof repair at Cardone that is significantly more than the $100,000 grant. So, um, is there a resolution to that effect any way?
There is.
Okay.
It's on page, oh, municipal order, page 23, your packet, I keep it here.
Thank you.
Let me add to that.
Yeah, please do.
That, uh, because we do not have the permanent lease, capital lease in place yet, we needed some mechanism to ensure that if we pay that extra now, that we'll get it back regardless of the lease. So, I drafted up a contract, which is, should be attached to it. It's, it's the same contract that extends the lease for another 30 days. Bishop has already signed it, I got the email this evening, the bishop has agreed. So, and it basically states that regardless of whether they enter into a lease, they will agree to pay it back. But if they enter into a lease, that the terms of that lease will supersede that agreement. And we've had the discussion that it is consistent. The terms of this agreement will be consistent with what we expect to see in the lease.
And we'll, we'll ask you to vote on this municipal order, but I want to make sure that you understand its relationship to the resolution approving the amendment of the Cardone short-term lease. We're only making this lease extension for 30 days, we think we can get it completed in that amount of time. It is still a 30-day extension, isn't it?
It is till May 15th, 30 days.
All right. But that short, when I asked you to approve a short-term lease extension earlier, it was simply adding months to the lease. This time, we're adding that payment structure into the short-term lease. But I think we're, we're, we're very safe on, on each of those. So, if, if you'd like to read the resolution for the.
Why don't we just read both resolutions since they tie together? One's a municipal order, one's a resolution.
I'm gonna read the municipal order first.
Okay.
In order approving a contract with Structural System Repair Group, LLC, for roof repair at Cardone and authorizing the mayor to sign all documents, whereas the city of Georgetown received a grant in the amount of $100,000 which was dedicated to Cardone, and whereas the city has solicited bids for roof repair, and whereas the lowest responsive and responsible bid was $184,440 from Structural System Repair Group, LLC, and whereas difference of $84,440 will be recouped through increased lease payments from the tenant, Roman Catholic Diocese of Lexington over a period of five years, and whereas the funds will be paid from prior year reserves and transferred to the Buildings and Improvements Account, 10-8-10-55-10, with a subsequent budget amendment. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the attached contract with Structural System Repair Group, LLC, for roof repair in the amount of $184,440 is hereby approved contingent upon the city receiving satisfactory documentation of the diocese's intent to repay funds in the amount of $84,440, and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Second, Mayor.
Thank you, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Good, now if we could do the resolution approving the short-term lease.
Yes, sir. Whereas the city and the Roman Catholic Diocese of Lexington, by and through the St. Francis and John Parish, the diocese, have previously entered into a six-month short-term lease in anticipation of executing the long-term capital lease for a portion of Cardone, and whereas the city previously extended the lease for three months to allow the city time to expand grant funds, expend grant funds for the benefit of Cardone. Whereas the lease will expire on April the 15th, 2017, and whereas has awarded a contract for the completion of roof repair work, and whereas the city anticipates the project being completed no later than May 15th, 2017, and whereas it is necessary for the lease to be extended for a period of 30 days. And whereas the diocese wishes to memorialize its commitment to repay certain roof repair costs to be paid by the city as part of a grant-funded project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Georgetown as follows. The City Council hereby approves the attached amendment to lease providing for an extension of the lease for a period of 30 days and for reimbursement of capital construction costs. The mayor is authorized to execute all relevant documents.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the resolution you've heard?
Make a motion.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Item D is a municipal order that is very straightforward. We have one of our new companies in the business park, Cyron Holdings, is wanting to expand their facility just a little bit more than they originally planned. They would like to buy some fill dirt from the business park. Engineers looked at it, Jack's looked at it, Jack took you out to look at it. And we, we think it's, it doesn't harm our ability to do anything in the business park. They're requesting to purchase 1,500 cubic yards at a dollar a cubic yard. They will have to move the dirt. Shall we read?
Sure. Whereas Cyron Holdings LLC is in the process of constructing a facility adjacent to the Lanes Run Business Park, which will create new jobs and contribute the economy of Georgetown, and whereas Cyron Holdings wishes to expand the facility to a greater extent than originally planned. And whereas Louis Bruscher, on behalf of Cyron Holdings, has requested to buy 1,500 cubic yards of fill dirt at $1 per cubic yard from adjacent property in the business park, and whereas the property from which the field dirt will be removed is generally unsuitable for business park development due to the steep terrain and proximity to flood plain. And whereas the field dirt, which lies on property purchased by the city for economic development purposes, is not being used by the city, and the use of which by Cyron Holdings will contribute to economic development, should be declared surplus and disposed of according to KRS 82.083, Section 4, Subsection B. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the aforementioned property is declared surplus and that the mayor is authorized to dispose of the same by contract at the price of $1 per cubic yard.
Thank you. If you have heard that municipal order, is there a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
We just surplus the dirt.
We did surplus, sir.
Nothing wrong with that.
We did. The next item on the agenda is something that we've been working on for a very long time and finally have it to, we've mentioned to council several times, and finally have an opportunity to bring it to you. And that is joining with the Scott County Fiscal Court to provide a 211-311 service for Georgetown and Scott County. This will, we've had the 311 helpline for a while. In fact, that effort was actually begun by the leaders of the Georgetown-Scott County Community Connection when they saw a need for a helpline and established an 863 help number for Georgetown. Since that time, United Way of the Bluegrass has taken over the 311 numbers for Georgetown and I think about 18 or 19 other communities. They have come to us, to Georgetown and Scott County with an effort to offer a very enhanced 211-311. The concept that they're advancing is that if you call nine, if you have an emergency, you call 911. If you have any other question, you call the 211. That can be, what time is the council meeting, what time do the fireworks go off? It could be, my neighbor doesn't have rent and they don't know how to get groceries. It can be all manner of questions that are not emergency in nature. We've worked with Chief Bossy and Dispatch and United Way of the Bluegrass folks. We will be the first community outside of Lexington, Lexington to have this substantially enhanced 311-211 service. United Way of the Bluegrass will train a crew of these 211-311 helpline operators. Calls will come into 31, I'm not sure if it's 211 or 311, it'll come into that number and they will handle all of the consumer needs, public needs type calls. If by chance they get an emergency call, they will immediately transfer it to 911. By light token, if 911 gets a call and it's not of an emergency nature, they can immediately transfer it to a skilled operator that can do the same work for them. We're not doing this because of a benefit to Dispatch, but we think there will be a benefit to Dispatch if they handle only high-level emergency calls. The contract that we've negotiated with United Way of the Bluegrass is $45,000 per year. Scott County Fiscal Court is willing to split that cost, so we're looking at $22,500 per year for the city to offer the service and the county will match that. It's our expectation that we would begin training these other operators, hopefully to have a, a start date by July, if we can. Maybe, we'll see, it may be ambitious.
Maybe a little ambitious, yes.
So, we've got, we've got two things to ask you to, is the item E on your agenda, which is a contract with United Way of the Bluegrass. But tied to that will be item 10 on your agenda, which is a municipal order approving the purchase of CRM software. That software is the software that the operators will use at the 311 center so that they can have access to our data. It's all, it's also a portal for all of our citizens if you want to report a pothole. If you want to report a street light out, if you want to report a culprit that's cleared up. You can, a citizen will be able to enter this into the system. The system will immediately create a work order and send it to the department head. The citizen will get an email saying, thank you for your request. We have dispatched it. The system will also, when we complete the job, will email the citizen and let them know that your complaint, your, your concern has been addressed. So, we think it's a significant improvement to our ability to give service and it'll also make this United Way of the Bluegrass 211 thing work.
And Mayor, the software is how much?
It's a, the annual, the annual cost is $10,000, which would be split with the county. And the upfront cost was even, was seven, I think.
I think it's even less than that, Mayor, I think the upfront cost was only three.
This is it then?
Yeah.
Three thousand?
The upfront cost is 3,500. Annual is, or the, the annual after this, this fiscal year is 14,000. So, but, so it's an initial cost of 3,500, prorated subscription for this fiscal year of 35, 25, and then every year thereafter, 14, 100, with an annual increase of 2%.
But in each of these cases, these numbers are being split with county government.
Yes.
Are we locked into this, let's say we have it for a year and we're really not seeing that much response and use out of it, are we locked into it for?
I'd say at least for five years.
At least.
For five years.
That is a factor of the pricing.
45,000 a year for the next five years.
It's a long time to be locked in.
Well, the United Way contract.
No, the United Way contract is one year, annually renewing.
Okay.
So, we're not locked into it. The CRM software.
But the expectation certainly is that it would be a long-term exercise. Even though, if it doesn't work and it blows up, we can get out of United Way contract for a year.
Would you still have the software contract?
We'd still have the software contract, but we think it has value just to our citizens.
Yeah, and we, Kyle's been working on that CRM software well before I think that he knew about it.
So, the initial cost of 3,500 to start up, is that split between the county and us?
Yeah.
So, sorry to have to explain both of those, but, but approving the United Way of the Bluegrass contract needs to be based on an assumption we'll complete the rest of that transaction as well. So, if you could read the municipal, oh, you gave it to me. Let's see, we're approving the contract with United Way.
In order approving an agreement with United Way of the Bluegrass for 211 and 311 information services and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents, whereas the city of Georgetown seeks to obtain services for the management and maintenance of its governmental resources as well as to provide information referrals to its citizens by developing a resource database, and whereas the city of Georgetown has negotiated a contract with United Way of the Bluegrass for such services in the amount of $45,000 for an initial term of 12 months, and whereas funds will be allocated for this service in a subsequent budget amendment. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the agreement between the city of Georgetown and United Way of the Bluegrass, which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, is approved, and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Motion for approval.
Have we seen a, reports of a need for this on other communities?
Sorry.
I'm, I'm not getting the need for it, I just, other communities, have they reported about how it's benefited them?
We're gonna be the first community outside of Lexington to do it to this magnitude. We check with Lexington, that, that would be that.
So, nobody else is doing it around, just Lexington?
Their intention is to move it out regionally from Lexington, we're the first one. So, no, there is not another city.
I think that if it takes the pressure off the 911 people for other emergencies, it's very beneficial, especially if you're the one that's calling 911 and you need help.
How will people know, how, how we, how do we educate people that they can call this number and use these numbers?
It'll take a big advertising effort.
And how do we do, how, how do we do that and how much money are we spending on that?
Put that on your local major, you said.
I don't, I don't have those estimates yet. But we are aware it takes a large advertising effort to get, to change, makes people aware of it. Maybe we could, yeah, we, we would need a campaign to make people aware of it.
We've actually met a few times and talked about different ways we might do this without it being a significant expense. For example, with the water company's bills, you can pay a small fee to have an additional sheet included in that bill, which explains whatever you want. And we, we talked about that in context with the, any possible changes that we would do with the solid waste ordinance. So, we're, we're wanting to explore that as one potential option, but an aggressive social media campaign, leaflets, talking to local businesses like, places of high-traffic areas to let us put stuff, hopefully things that are not expensive but just involve time.
So, we've not really got that part of the plan worked out onto how to get the residents, I mean, like, if we approve this tonight, is the contract starting tomorrow, but yet we don't have, when's the contract start?
And that's a good question. The, the, the 311 contract actually contains, if you look, I think, towards the very end, one of the addendums actually has a timeline for implementation. It's about a nine-month learning process, if you will, where we set up committees, talk about this exact issue, they start training. We actually have pretty significant obligations to put together materials such as, you know, pre-recorded statements and, and answers to the questions. I mean, the whole idea of somebody being able to call and ask a question, we have to spend some time anticipating those questions. some time anticipating those questions. So the contract will technically go into effect immediately, but live implementation will not happen till around January of next year.
And so the forty-five thousand dollars, we give them now and, but we don't, we don't, um, pull the trigger, so to speak, until nine months?
Correct.
And are we, the city, are the city doing all the work, or?
I don't think that's a fair characterization, but we are, we are required to do, we are required to provide them with the data that they will be sharing with, um, individuals who call.
Callers.
So, yeah, absolutely, there is, there is work on our part. There is.
It's gathering the information, it's not, we're not the one providing any of the telecommunicators or any, any employees in with this or any of that type of thing, right?
That's correct.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, with the calling, that's all taking place.
Would we hire two people?
Yes.
What the, okay, what is Bluegr, what is, uh, United Way doing for us?
What, what, United Way of the Bluegrass will do is, I, my understanding is, they will create, they have a sort of a formulaic list of questions. Here are the, here are the five thousand questions we get a year, and, you know, there will be some of those that are easy answers, but there will be some dialogue about how those questions are answered, and that'll be a list that is developed over time.
So do they train us?
We don't, we're not actually handling it at all. They're doing all the...
United Way of the Bluegrass rents the spot, hires the people, does everything. We pay them forty-five thousand dollars a year between the city and the county. It's real straightforward.
So you see it as being a real big benefit to the city?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Are there no questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, item F on your agenda is a municipal order appropriating funds to pay for a Kentucky transportation cabinet enhancement fee for a right-in, right-out-only on Cherry Blossom Way at Walmart. We have been, uh, led to believe that if the city and the county will share the fifty thousand dollar enhancement fee, that, uh, Senator Thayer and others think that the state can handle all of the construction cost. Uh, to have a, a second way to get in and out of Walmart, it would be a right-in and right-out-only onto Cherry Blossom.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, that we, uh, contribute the twenty-five thousand dollars for the enhancement fee. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain, Mayor.
Marvin abstains. Uh, under the finance, uh, you'll recall at our, uh, last meeting when we did second reading and final approval of our amended budget, we included funds to buy a, uh...
Excavator.
Excavator, thank you. Excavator for the cemetery. Uh, so tonight, uh, team's gone through that bid process, well, actually, it's a state contract, so it's real straightforward.
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Uh, going back to the question on the CRM software, uh, item ten on your agenda, there's a municipal order for, for, uh, that purchase as well. Thank you. Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, seconded everywhere.
Marvin got it. Yep.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and for the police department, we have a municipal order approving purchase of a, an unmanned aerial vehicle. We've talked about this quite a bit. We, we think that, uh, a drone...
That's what we, we have to run down anywhere in the city, don't we, drones?
It's a drone.
Drone.
Uh, but, but Chief Bossy and his staff have got a...
Make it easy.
Got a very specific set of uses for the drone. Uh, we've gonna, we're gonna be very careful and, and not use the drone in any inappropriate ways. General Assembly just passed, uh, a bill that says, uh, you cannot do surveillance on an individual without a warrant, even from a drone. Uh, but we, we can use it effectively for accident reconstruction. I think the big thing we'd like to do is use it at very high altitude where it's not surveilling any one person, uh, but to pick up heat signatures on the ground where then we can direct a cruiser to go by that spot. Just like in, it's, it's a benefit.
Yeah.
Uh, we will not, we will approve the purchase, yes ma'am?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, we won't use it until we've developed policies. For the department to use a drone, we have to have policy set, and for a department to use a drone, you have to have a, a licensed drone pilot.
Okay, that was my question. Okay, that's why, that was my question, 'cause I knew that.
I bet I know who it'll be because he has one, he flies it in our neighborhood. Oh. I bet I know who it's gonna be.
Put that on the record.
Our name starts with an N.
Come on, make the motion.
Know who it is.
Motion's been made. Purchase the UAV, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, and now at the hour of ten o'clock, it, the meeting belongs to the council, as if it ever belonged to anybody else but the council. Mark, anything for the good of the order? Thank you, Chuck.
Nope. I would just like to, uh, let everyone know, uh, that Saturday night, my church, Victory Life Church, and, uh, we are working on getting certified for Celebrate Recovery. It's for hurts, habits, and hangups, for individuals, people that, uh, need a safe place to go. And, um, our launch is Saturday night at, uh, six P.M. We're gonna have speakers, testimony, music, and food.
All right. Food's what gets it.
Food. Uh, would love to extend invitation to all the council members if, uh, you would like to come and support. The goal is to have several churches involved so that people have a safe place to go. It's just one other avenue to get out there and help our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, one thing I wanna say, something about the fairness earlier, uh, probably out of all the years I've sat on council, that's probably one of the hardest, uh, my heart pounded out of my chest to make that second, um, to follow Chuck. But I will say something very complimentary to both sides. I think it was superb how both sides handled theirselves with, it wasn't a very divisive, um, and could be very emotional issue, and both sides handled theirselves really well. And I will say, even though, um, cutting it a little short, I do, I did hear things that probably do need to be addressed in this community and think about, but I don't think the fairness order, ordinance would have been the way to have gotten them addressed. But there's some things that I, that I heard and learned, and, um, applaud both sides for handling it the way they did.
Thank you. Anything else? Marvin?
No, sir.
I echo Karen. You know, I learned a lot about different sides and different issues with it, and I think there's a lot of things that can be done community-wise and...
We'll point out, we could have learned more, but we decided not to learn more.
Well, no, we've listened to both sides and we've gotten emails and we have...
I said that we could have learned more, but we elected not to.
That's your opinion?
Yes, ma'am, it is. Anything else?
No.
Nellie? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.